It is six o'clock and the City Council is in session. And we're going to be led in the invocation by Judy Eitner and then the pledge of allegiance. If you'll please stand.
Before we pray, I'd like to do something a little bit different. Because it's a day of remembering, would you share with somebody close to you where you were, what you were doing seventeen years ago today? We'll just take two minutes here.
I was at home getting ready and Joe Barry called me and said, "Turn on the timer."
I had just played basketball. But I remember all that on TV. It's going on once in a while, a little black and white. I just remember it already, the first one already hit, the second one hit while I was watching, still don't know what the heck I was watching.
Thank you for doing that. And it's a day that we will all remember. It's a day we all need to remember. Will you pray with me, please? Lord, we come before you tonight with thanksgiving for the wonderful, wonderful rain. Just keep it coming. We also thank you, Lord, that we are so blessed to live in a country that knows freedom. We also thank you for every individual who is prepared, ready, and willing to protect that freedom for us. We just ask that you be with all of them, be with their families continually, Lord. And then we ask you, as we come together again, we ask you that you be with our thoughts, our words, and our deeds as we make decisions for the city of Kerrville. Just be with us, Lord. Guide us. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've come to the announcements of community interest and, Stuart, let me just mention this. The purpose of this part of the agenda is for recognitions, reminders of events as stated on the agenda under this item. It is not a time to make remarks about opinions and positions on policy matters, as there is time for that during other portions of the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you all for being here tonight. We have, I know we've got a long meeting, so we just have one announcement tonight. And if I can get that put up on the screen. Now, this is something that I know nobody in this room is ever going to need, but I'm just going to tell you about it anyway. If you, the Kerrville Municipal Court has a brand-new justified automatic customer kiosk. We call it JAP for short. And it's a new way to make your court payments. You don't even have to go inside. There's no waiting in line. It's available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's bilingual, English and Spanish. And you can allow, you can make your payments through credit card, check, cash. And if you make it cash, it'll even give you change back. Like I said, I know no one in here will have to use it, but just in case. It's on the outside of the Municipal Court Building on McCarland. That's it for tonight.
All right. Any other announcements?
I have one, if I might.
Okay.
I had the pleasure of meeting a Chalk Festival artist, Norma Clausen. On Saturday, she did a portrait of Byron Nelson that looked like a photograph. Anyway, really talented artist. And the Chalk Festival's coming up on the 13th and 14th of October in downtown. It's free. It's free to the artists. We have anywhere from 5,000 to 6,000 visitors a day. A lot of them are local that visit it. So it's a great opportunity to get out there. There are food trucks, there's music, and there's some great art. October 13th and 14th.
All right. Okay. We've come to our visitor citizens forum, and we would like for you to come to the podium when you speak. Just to note, the council may not respond to questions, but may refer questions to staff or place an issue on a future agenda. And that no discussion may take place or action taken. All right.
We have a couple of speakers, Mayor.
Okay.
First one is Glenn Andrew.
All right. Glenn?
My name is Glenn Andrew, 3553 La Combray here in Kerrville. First, thanks to the City Council for your time and your commitment. We respect it and appreciate it. Thanks also to those of you who have respected the clear mandate of May 2018 and are following the course. We appreciate that. I'm going to tell you a true story. In a city in North Texas, a young man was elected to their city council. He was not yet 30, and after his election, he was impressed with his achievements and with the opportunity to impress all those citizens attending or reading about the city council meeting. So to assure those reading the newspaper or attending the new council meeting, the new councilperson studied the agenda intently and prepared a long list of questions to be asked at each meeting. Most of the questions were designed to assure his constituents knew he had prepared for each meeting diligently. He prided himself on asking more questions than any other city councilperson and often literally played gotcha with the city staff with his questions. This approach occurred at almost every meeting and on many agenda items. Meetings were needlessly extended, and the staff became increasingly suspicious of the new council member. A close friend of this new council member by the name of Joe was also on the council and had served for several years as a respected council member. Joe approached the newbie after one of the extended meetings. He asked a sharp but very insightful question. Joe asked, "Talking about your questions at the city council, what's your objective? Are you trying to impress the citizens? Or are you trying to really seek answers to your questions to prepare yourself for a knowledgeable vote?" Well, the answer most probably was to impress others and a little self-aggrandizement. The only acceptable answer to give Joe was to seek answers to the questions, to seek data to make better decisions, and to have the best insights so as to make the best decisions on the vote. Joe then replied, "Then why don't you ask those questions? You have prepared so diligently with the staff before the meeting. And thus, the staff will assuredly provide you with the best, most accurate answers available. You will reduce the perceived gotcha game, you will get better data, and you will reduce the meeting lengths. And if you get the data which you thought is important, if you get data which you thought is important for the citizens to hear, give it and then give recognition to the staff for such great work. What an amazing insight." The new council member implemented this sage advice. True to the advice from Joe, data was accurately and willingly provided, decisions were made easier, and the public received better data. And the growing suspicion between him and the council eased. Meetings were more efficient, and inter-council collegiality was improved. How do I know this story's true? Well, I'm the newbie, Glenn Andrew. I served four years on the city council and 15 years on school board, always trying to heed that advice from that day forward. I just wanted to offer this story. And if it's useful or applicable, I suggest the ideas be considered and implemented. It's a good, positive, proven path towards major tenants of good governance. Thank you.
We have another speaker, Stephen Lehman.
My name is Steve Lehman. I live at 1428 Gloucester Point. I'm a co-founder of the Hill Country Preppers and have been teaching emergency preparedness for six years. September has been designated as National Preparedness Month since 2004. It is a time to focus our attention on the importance of preparing our families, our homes, our businesses, and our communities for disasters that threaten our lives, property, and homeland. During this time, we also honor first responders who first worked tirelessly to safeguard our nation and protect our citizens. We also recognize that the average citizen, your neighbor, or a complete stranger is often the first responder to an accident or disaster scene. Over the past year, communities nationwide and across the territories have witnessed and endured damage from multiple hurricanes, wildfires, tornadoes, floods, volcanic eruptions, and other natural and man-caused disasters. Combined, these natural disasters affected 47 million people. And tens of thousands were mobilized to provide aid, comfort, and assistance in spite of tremendous challenges. The resilience of the American people continues to prevail. Tragedies are somber reminders that preparedness is a shared responsibility and that it is critical to maintain readiness. All Americans can prepare for potential disasters by developing and practicing a family emergency response plan, assembling a disaster supply kit, signing up for alerts on mobile devices, setting aside emergency savings, and maintaining adequate insurance policies for their homes and businesses. The Federal Emergency Management Agency's Ready Campaign at ready.gov outlines other important steps to best prepare for a major disaster. This month, I encourage everyone to take the opportunity to ensure that they have an emergency response plan in place and ready to be properly executed. The emergencies and disasters test the resilience and strength of families, communities, and our nation. It is impossible to avoid every challenge and threat, but we can and must prepare for them. By doing so, we can help protect our communities and save lives. I encourage all local officials to take action to be prepared for disasters or emergencies by making and practicing their personal emergency response plans. Each step we take to become better prepared makes a real difference in how our families and communities will respond and persevere when faced with the unexpected. The purpose of Annex I of the Basic Emergency Plan is to outline the means, organization, and process by which you will provide appropriate information and instructions to the public during emergency situations. This annex also provides for public education to be conducted in advance of emergency situations to reduce the likelihood that citizens will place themselves in hazardous situations that may require an emergency response. I would like the city to consider expanding its public education role to encouraging citizens to be more resilient and self-reliant during emergencies and disasters, thereby decreasing the demand for disaster and post-disaster services and enabling the community, the recovery from disasters by both the city and its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We proceed then to a presentation that the city manager will make.
Okay. Test, test. Test. Charvy Tork, can you come on up, please? Where's Charvy? There she is. So it's my distinct pleasure to be able to recognize one of our leadership team members. And Charvy is our IT Director, Information Technology. And she has recently completed a certification that is really, I think, cherished by those in her profession for having achieved. And I'm just going to read this out to her, and then I'm going to make a few remarks. So this is a certificate of recognition for Charvy Tork, Director of Information and Technology, on receiving the Certified Government Chief Information Officer accreditation. The certification program is a 12-month course that lays out the foundation for assessing and addressing critical issues facing information technology leadership in local government. The certification equips leaders with the requisite tools to manage and improve information technology governance, project management, risk management, and management. So Charvy is one of those folks that you have around that you don't really hear a lot from, but is really busy getting the work done. And we all know, if we're a part of the organization or even our own homes, how important now technology is to our lives. So every employee in the city knows who Charvy is because she's our lifeline to get our work done. And her customer service is impeccable. And I know that she's constantly being courted away by other institutions just because of her responsiveness and her abilities. So we really thank you, Charvy. And she doesn't like the limelight, but we're going to put her in the limelight today. She came to us originally as an intern from Shrider University and came back to work for us full-time and worked her way up very quickly under mentorship of Kent Meismer. And so we are blessed to have her on staff, and I think all the staff will tell you how much they appreciate the work of Charvy and her team. So Charvy, congratulations.
I should say, I am technologically challenged, and Charvy has helped me already several times. She's good. I would like for those representing the Recovery Coalition Community or Recovery Community Coalition, if you will please come forward. Dale Trees is the chairman.
I hope you can understand me. It's you and me. Yeah. All right. Okay. This is proclamation. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and substance abuse disorders works, treatment is effective -- excuse me, substance abuse disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation. And preventing and overcoming mental and substance abuse disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas the impact of mental and substance abuse disorders is apparent in our local community, and through Recovery Month, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of mental and substance abuse disorders, which can lead more people into needed treatment. Managing the effects of these conditions can help people achieve healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas, we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance abuse disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas, the Recovery Month observance continues to work to improve the lives of those affected by mental and substance abuse disorders by raising awareness of these diseases and educating communities about the prevention, treatment, and recovery resources that are available. And whereas, to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition, and Facing Addiction with N-C-A-D-D Communities Project of Kerrville invite all residents of Kerrville to participate in National Recovery Month September 2018. And now therefore, I, Bill Blackford, the mayor of the city of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2018 as National Recovery Month. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you. That's a compliment. Thank you, Mayor.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda. These items are considered routine and can be approved in one motion unless a council member asks for separate consideration of an item. It is recommended that the City Council approve the following items, which will grant the mayor or city manager the authority to take all actions necessary for each approval. And this is items 4A through 4C.
All right. Yes.
Well, I just, I have a comment about 4C, and if we need to pull it to do so, we can. What's the --
Yeah, we do.
Okay. I'd like to pull 4C then.
Okay. We will pull 4C. And are you ready to vote on 4A and 4B under the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve 4A and 4B.
All right. There's a motion?
I'll second.
Second? Okay. All in favor by the raised hand? Okay. Okay. Let's come back to 4C, Community Service Agreement.
While I am very happy we were able to provide this support, this financial support regarding this cause, a speaker that's going to be at Tybee High School talking about your life's -- your future and your life and your career and your path in life and how you can overcome the obstacles with regard to drugs and other things, the cause isn't my concern. The process in which we approved the funding was my concern. What I'd like to propose is that we talk about some guidelines, because we had a very short turnaround to respond to approving the financial commitment due to a printing deadline, which I just want to make sure for future causes and future opportunities, we have ample time to discuss it among ourselves and do the diligence we need to do research and make sure this is a cause we want to support, since it is your money that we're spending. So perhaps at our workshop on the 18th, we could add this to that agenda to talk about adding a policy that we have, we have to have time to at least discuss it. Maybe it's the next council meeting, maybe it's an emergency meeting. But this was a very short deadline, and that, I'm still happy we did it. I just think we need to, in the future, have more time to consider it, ask questions, make sure we have all our information before we make that financial commitment.
See, Mayor, how should we proceed on this?
No action necessary as far as that item being added to the agenda for discussion.
Okay.
That's, I think it would be the best time well spent, so.
Okay. Then are we ready back to vote on 4C?
Well, can we, since we've got 4C up here now, we might as well plug it, what we're actually doing. The agenda item doesn't say it as specifically as it maybe could have. But this is basically a recovery community sort of event, information educational event. It's being held at Tybee. And the speaker, you don't see it in the agenda item, it's actually Chris Heron, the Chris Heron Project. And they're also talking about his own foundation's Purple Project. And I'm not sure, other than it being attended by all of the students at Tybee High School, I'm told that there'll be live streams to the other schools in the area at the same time. And so I guess hence the name livestream, right? So anyways, that's what it's actually, what actually is occurring here. And the city ended up agreeing to sponsor the event, be one of the sponsors of the event.
Okay.
Glad to do so, too.
All right. Do I hear a motion on 4C?
I'll move that we ratify the resolution.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion, a second. All in favor with the upraised hand?
Aye.
Okay. It is unanimous. Let me ask you, do we have parents or students that are here because of the Youth Advisory Committee? Okay. Okay. All right. Then I'll tell you what. We're going to go ahead and move that item up to the present, because tonight's meeting may be long.
She's the only one. I say we make her stay. I'm joking. I'm just joking.
All right. Well, I'll tell you what. We'll go ahead and move to that. The appointments to the Youth Advisory Committee?
I need to clarify to everybody, that's not a random person. I actually know her, so it was a joke. She understood that. Just so everybody understands, right?
Yeah. Right. All right.
Mayor and council, this is a 15-member board, and it starts in the beginning of the school year and goes through the end of the school year. So we have 15 available positions, and we have 15 applications. So.
Are all those applications now complete?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the number 15, that's been taken care of?
Yes, ma'am. We did have 16 applications, and one young man withdrew his application. So now we have 15 and 15 spots.
Okay. All right. Council has received this list of these applicants for the Kerrville Youth Advisory Committee. Do I hear a motion to accept these?
I move that we accept the 15 applicants for the Kerrville Youth Advisory Committee as presented to us.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. I hear a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, I didn't actually read them. Is the Kendall Brown that's on there, is that Jody Brown's kid? Is that who we're talking about? Does anybody know? Okay. Just a question.
Yeah. Okay. All right. All in favor with the upraised hand? Okay. And motion carries unanimously. We go now to a series of public hearings at 6:25. Here Paxton from the Development Services. And Cheryl, you'll read this.
Yes, sir. This is a public hearing regarding the annexation of approximate 5.335 acre tract of land located within the William Watt Survey Number 65, Abstract Number 364, Kerr County, Texas, being generally located adjacent to State Highway 173 and part of the Comanche Trace Residential subdivision. Said tract also known as the Comanche Trace Section 15, proposed zoning for the tract is planned development zoning district to authorize single-family residential. Do you want me to read all of them?
Yes, go ahead.
Scott?
Do you want to introduce all? One at a time. One at a time. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, City Council. This is Section 15 of Comanche Trace. It went before the Planning Commission on March 1st, or, excuse me, April 5th. Preliminary plat was brought to the council, to the commission on March 1st. This is the first public hearing, and they are recommending planned district development for residential. This is a map showing the different annexations of Comanche Trace as they phase through their project over the last 20 years. This is the plat as it's presented to the Planning Commission. You can see the garden lots on the north side and the single-family lots on the south side. Again, this is a public hearing, no action item. The next public hearing will be September 18th, first reading of the ordinance on October 9th, and the second final reading will be October 23rd.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone here to speak on that? Okay. Does council have any questions?
I have one question, Mayor. Is this creating a donut in the city limits? Is there no, where's the city limit line? Is it actual? Can you go back to that map?
Yes, there will be a location on the southwest side of that that is outside the city limits, part of their open space.
Do they have plans of how they're going to access that later, or?
No, we have talked to the developer about completing annexation of the rest of the subdivision, but we have not come up with a plan for that.
This question got asked at P&amp;Z at that meeting, and I forget, do you recall what they actually kind of resolved? They asked, I think it was Zubor asked about, Commissioner Zubor asked about the donut hole and it not kind of being in what we're trying to do. So I forgot what was, what were they told? Do you remember?
Same thing. We have talked to the developer about a plan to annex the remainder of the project, but not specific to any location.
So we are not voting on this tonight. We're just moving ahead. Okay?
We're closing that public hearing.
Yeah. Closing that public hearing and moving to 5B, public hearing at 6:28.
5B, I'm sorry. Go ahead. 5B is a public hearing regarding the annexation of an approximate 3.669 acre tract of land located within the J.D. Leavelle Survey Number 1862, Abstract Number 1435, Kerr County, Texas, being known as 884 Farm-to-Market Road 783 Harper Highway, proposed zoning for the tract is Gateway Zoning District.
Thank you, ma'am. This is, again, roughly a five-acre tract along Harper Highway. They are recommending, the Planning Commission's recommending Gateway District. The request for this tract of land is within the future lane use plan catalyst area number five, and should be positively considered for annexation to encourage other development within the Harper Road corridor and the Kerrville Sports Complex. Petition was submitted on June 28th. City Council passed a resolution on July 11th. This is the first public hearing with no action. Next public hearing will be September 18th, first reading October 9th, and second reading October 23rd.
All right. Any questions in regard to this from the citizens?
The utilities are already alongside the road, right? The utilities are already alongside the road, right?
That's correct.
Reading's there, ready to go.
Okay. All right, move ahead, close that public hearing and open the next at six thirty.
Five C is a public hearing regarding the annexation of an approximate zero point eight eight five acre tract of land being located within both the Jesus Hernandez Survey number five forty-eight, abstract number one eighty-nine, and the M.K. and T.E. Railway Company Survey number one eight six two, abstract number one four three five, Kerr County, Texas, being known as eight seventy-four Farm-to-Market Road seven eighty-three Harper Highway, proposed zoning for the tract is Gateway Zoning District.
This property is just shy of an acre, point eight eight five acres, next door to the previous tract along Harper Highway. Planning Commission on August second recommended gateway zoning. This also is within the Kerrville twenty fifty Future Land Use Plan Catalyst Number Five, focusing on the sports complex and Harper Highway corridor. This petition was filed on June twenty-sixth, came before the council on July tenth, and is on the same timeline as far as next steps, September eighteenth is the second public hearing, October ninth and October twenty-third for the ordinance readings.
All right. Okay, any comments from citizens in regard to this? Okay?
I had a.
Just a, I'm gonna close the public hearing, okay, questions from council?
Yes, there's a storage unit behind that, it's not, the storage unit is not part of this, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
This is the shopping center.
Just the shopping center part, okay.
All right. Nothing else, we move to the next public hearing, five D at six thirty-two.
Item five D is a public hearing regarding the annexation of an approximate fifty-nine point oh nine acre tract of land located within both the Joseph S. Anderson Survey number one forty-one, abstract number two, and the J.S. Sater Survey number one forty-two, abstract number two ninety. Kerr County, Texas, being generally located adjacent to State Spur ninety-eight Thompson Drive, addressed as fifteen fifteen Nap Road South, proposed zoning for the tract is seven W zoning district.
Thank you, ma'am, this is fifty-nine acre tract of land along Thompson Drive, between Thompson Drive and Nimitz Lake. There's petition annexation also, and this is within the Kerrville twenty fifty Future Land Use Plan Catalyst Area Number Three, and is recommended for annexation to encourage other developments along the existing Spur ninety-eight or Thompson Drive surrounding Nimitz Lake. Petition was filed on June eleventh and heard by city council on June tenth. This is the first public hearing, and the next steps on a similar schedule, September eighteenth the second public hearing, October ninth and October twenty-third for the ordinance readings. The applicant has continued to work with the adjacent property owners regarding the annexation boundary. The boundary currently sits along, around the center of a private driveway between the three adjacent property owners. They are working with those owners to possibly move that boundary to lessen the area being annexed back to the common fence line between the properties. They are working on getting an updated meets and bounds description that will go along with the ordinance to reduce that area and therefore leaving the adjacent property owner's driveway outside of the city limits. If that'll be pleased to answer your questions.
All right. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak to this?
Yes, sir, there are several speakers.
Okay.
The first one is Granger McDonald.
All right.
Thank you, council, my name is Granger McDonald, twenty-nine fifty-one Fall Creek Road, Kerrville, Texas, here speaking on behalf of the developer. We have in fact been working with the three primary neighbors, that'd be Mr. Bilt, who's present here tonight, and Mr. Johnson, who's also present, Ms. Nielsen, who is not present, as well as Bill Matthews, who lives across the street, across Thompson Drive from us. As far as Mr. Bilt, I, well, it's carved to all three of the primaries, we have a verbal agreement that we've, that we've worked through, a written version is being sent back and forth right now, it's in draft form, and everyone's commenting and changes are being made appropriately to that. As for what that means, as far as the Biltas, we are gonna be removing Nap Road, we're gonna be selling them a portion of our property to create a driveway for just them to use into their property. As for the Johnsons, we got a seven-page list of demands from them, and we've gone through most of them. The net result is, we've moved one of our primary roads that we showed on the original plat that was shown at the Planning Commission, so that they have a, an access way of just their own into, to the public street. We are also, then with the Nielsen's next door, creating a driveway just for them. Somehow in all this, I switched from being a developer to a divorce mediator and have helped the Johnsons and the Nielsen's get a divorce and not use each other's street anymore. So, we, I think we gave it done. And, and they also, a big piece of the pie that I think that we, was commented on, is they don't want to be citizens of Kerrville and don't want their driveway to be part of the city, and we're providing meets and bounds to the city attorney to keep that from being annexed into the city with our annexation. Also, the other comment was Mr. Matthews, he and I visited about it, his primary concern is that we use downlighting throughout the property, and we've agreed to that, and we'd use it normally because we hate uplights, so that's a waste of light, shiny light down, not up in the sky. I think that pretty well covers the, the high points of the agreement, we've agreed to height limitations on the property adjacent to the Johnsons and the Nielsen's, and we have agreed to fencing along their property as well. I'm sure they'll remind me of anything that, that I've left out of the primary agreement. Any questions at this time?
We have to hold questions of the council till later, after everybody's spoken, so we have another speaker regarding this matter.
Kent Calhoun.
Kent Calhoun.
I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you. We have a four hundred feet along Thompson Road directly across from where this development is going to be. We also have three driveways on Spur ninety-eight, and our first driveway has not been impacted by cars running off the road, second driveway has been hit eleven times, third driveway has been hit approximately twenty-two, twenty-three times. I can be a little bit off a couple on these things because both driveways, second and third, are completely obliterated now. These are where, where people have driven pickup trucks or whatever, hopefully no one was injured, but they're just completely wiped out. And they build these up and then they get knocked down again. So, my concern with the development, the proposed development, which we, we really have no objections, even though no one's contacted us, our property borders, the Matthews, we have four hundred feet toward Junction Highway from where their property is, no one has contacted us about anything. We also have driveway there, but we don't use that actively. My concern is that the speed limit needs to be readjusted, or the road needs to be maybe some kind of a study. It's not only just for our, we don't care so much about our driveway. If somebody was to run off that and to die, that would be concerning. And, and again, as I said, these, these driveways, they get hit so often, they're completely obliterated anyway, so I don't care. And our first driveway, the one that we normally come in, that's, that's only been hit like maybe once or twice, and that just knocks down the reflectors. But my main concern is that the, if the speed limit were lowered, which we're not even sure, we live there, we're not quite sure what the speed limit is because the signs are somewhat confusing. I know up in Fredericksburg, when you go to hit the highway two ninety, you make that right-hand turn at the gas station up there, it's forty miles an hour, and I think that would be helpful to slow these people down so they don't run off the road. And a couple times, my wife has been coming in, it's not so much the car that's directly behind her when she puts on a turn signal to turn off of Thompson Drive to, in our driveway, it's the car behind that car that doesn't see the turn signal. So, all he sees is a guy slowing down, and he wants to drive sixty miles an hour, and my wife has two cars in front, and she wants to make a right-hand turn to come in our driveway. And so, I'm not quite sure what I'm really up here for, but I just think that if someone, someone maybe should be concerned about this, that's all. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, all right.
Jim Bilt?
Yeah.
Good evening, I'm Jim Bilt, and I live at fifteen twenty Nap Road, which is at the end of the south part of Nap Road on the other side of the river. We have bought this property on the west side, and part of the property that was originally intended to be annexed is on, as, as Granger McDonald said, on the outside of their fence or the inside of our fence, and we have no objection to the annexation as long as that strip's taken out as, as been agreed. I don't know what the mechanics for getting that strip out involved, but I think before the first reading is passed, it ought, it ought to be made clear that that portion is not gonna be in the annexation. I also want to bring to your attention two or three problems this annexation raises, the main one being Nap Road, which is partly county road and partly city road. The county has not abandoned their portion of the road, and as far as I know, they don't have a proposal to do that. That's our only legal access to our house, that road's been in place about eighty-five years, our house has been there since the thirties, it's the old Dr. Knapp place out there, and like Granger said, we're working on getting an agreement to resolve our access. That has not been done yet, and until it is, I want to be on record as opposing the closing of Nap Road. According to the courts and including the Texas Supreme Court, they cannot close a public road as long as and abutting property owner with no other access objects to it. So that's gonna be a problem that's gonna become before the city in the future, depending on what kind of agreement we get. The other thing I want to bring to your attention is a water problem out there. This is on a hillside, the preliminary plat, as approved by the Planning and Zoning, does not address the water problems, and as y'all know, that lake that this property bounds on is the public drinking water for the city of Kerrville. I've discussed this some with them, and they say they're working on, on resolving the water problems, but those are two issues that's gonna come up about the annexation of this land, and I think they're both significant issues. On the roadway, the courts have said that if a road is abandoned, it diminishes the value of a person's property, the entity abandoning the road is liable for the diminution of the value. We think the closing of this road would diminish the value of our property materially because we have a gate down there and a paved road up to our house, and the initial access they proposed came in the back, back end of our property instead of the access that's been there for eighty years. So I just wanted to bring those two things to your attention. We have no objection to the annexation as long as that strip's taken out. Any questions?
I don't think so, thank you, thank you.
Mike, can I ask a question? Mike, basically, you know, they've talked about it, and you, I think you've told us before, but just to make sure, what's, what's the deadline that we're facing on a boundary change, an annexation boundary change, to keep this process moving in the?
Well, they, they've, they've done actually carve, they've carved out that piece already, I've seen a map or a survey map of that, and so I suspect probably before the next public hearing, we'll have a new meets and bounds. I, I, it's not, it won't impact.
But I mean, that's what, that's what I'm actually asking, so what's, what's the last day we could make a change to the boundary before we have to restart the process?
I think you're, you know, you're talking about, you, you already have a description of the, of the entire initial part of the property, one of the annex, they're, they're just gonna reduce that by, I think, a third of an acre, if that's true? So, I, I don't think that's a problem at all, as long as we have, what I've told them, as long as we have a full meets and bounds description prior to the first reading of the ordinance, and they, they said they'll have it way before then.
And that's October, right, first week, October?
Okay, do we have other speakers on this matter?
Yes, sir, there's Vivian Calhoun.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Vivian Calhoun, twelve forty-nine Thompson Drive, and my husband did address some of what I was gonna say, and basically I am speaking about the traffic which is on Thompson Drive currently, already gives myself, my husband, our children, a challenge to pull out onto Thompson Drive, make a ninety-degree turn either to the right or to the left, and is a challenge to pull into our driveway with cars going fifty, fifty-five, sometimes sixty miles per hour, and they don't realize there's driveway there. So, what I'd like to know is, consider, I'm not against the subdivision at all, but there will be increased traffic on Thompson Drive, so I would like to know if the speed limit can be reduced. I was hoping for thirty-five, but forty sounds good. And I was also hoping that the lanes could be widened to four. There's already four lanes driving past Saddlewood Estates, and I'd like to know if the lanes could be widened from two to four between Nap Road and the water treatment plant. I think that would help us and the other entrances on Thompson Drive and, and would help prevent possible accidents, because one time I did literally almost get hit turning into my driveway by someone who didn't understand that my turn signal wasn't a mistake, he said, he thought it was a mistake, and it wasn't, I was literally turning into my driveway, he had to pull off the road, slamming the brakes into our ditch to avoid hitting me, and I went up and talked to him. And I think something like that might increase in frequency if we don't reduce the speed limit, and would be helpful if there, for everybody in general, I think, if there were four lanes instead of two. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask the city manager, can that be referred to someone in terms of?
I'd be glad to respond, and once we get through all the speakers.
Okay, all right, or do we have any other speakers on this matter? Okay, if not, do we have anything from the council, and I'm gonna start round robin fashion over with Mr. Vogel.
Sure, I have a couple questions, and that, well, this is one for you, Hayes, along that land on the fence, just being annexed, does that need to be conveyed before we annex, or just a meets and bounds good enough?
No, meets and bounds.
Okay. And then also, for developer staff, how are we providing utilities to this property? Because I know in the comprehensive plan, it shows this is a catalyst area, are we gonna follow, follow the wastewater master plan, the freezing nickels are done?
All right. And I didn't say, let's do one question per council, and then we'll come back around.
Mr. Vogel, there's always already been construction plans coming down Thompson Drive for water and wastewater that have been submitted and approved by the city staff, and completely engineered, and we're ready to start those upon annexation.
Okay, I understand it's gonna be a forced man along Thompson Drive, and I just don't feel that that's very open to the area, because what if other people want to develop their property, are they gonna have to run it to your list station, or how's that gonna work?
The way I understand it, now yielded our engineer, that it can be tapped along the way, in, in various different locations, because several other people along there have asked us that specific question.
Will the city allow that? Because I know we just had someone do that, and we said that's not common practice.
We just have to look at it, we're just not at that stage yet.
But we are at the stage where the decision's been made by the city that we're going with a forced man instead of the master plan that says gravity fed, is that correct?
Drew, could you respond, and then we'll go to Ms. Ick.
I'd have to defer to the city engineer, I'm not familiar with the engineering plans that were done.
I'm not familiar with the engineering plans that were done.
Okay. Ms. Agner?
Uh, I don't have any real questions. I just thank you for working so hard with your neighbors, and I'm just so glad to see the, uh, that you're speaking to each other, you're working things out, and, and I appreciate that very, very much.
And if I could, in answers to the Calhoun's question, we've already commissioned a traffic study that will address all those issues, and that'll be presented to Tex Todd, who will have the control over that speed limit.
I assumed you probably have. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Good, good. Okay.
That was my, uh, question was maybe a traffic, uh, a warning light, yellow signal at, at somewhere down the future. When the traffic study's done, you'll know more. But I know on 173 around Lower Tolucrec Road, they added a yellow flashing light, and it made a lot of difference. So I'm optimistic there'll be a grand entrance for someplace, some, something like, like that to go, so...
Okay. Um, Mr. Vogel, anything else?
That's just, maybe just some answers to those questions that I had, Mark. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Broody?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Uh, if there are no other speakers, and we've covered that for now, I close that public hearing at six fifty-one, and we move to six A at six fifty-one. Okay?
Six A is ordinance number twenty eighteen dash twenty, amending the city's zoning code by changing the zoning district for property out of the William Watt, survey number sixty-five, abstract number three sixty-four, and the William Watt, survey number sixty-six, abstract number three sixty-five, specifically lots number, numbers one through six and lots twenty-two through thirty-four, which make up a portion of Comanche Trace, Phase thirteen, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as those lots addressed as three thousand one through three thousand eleven and two thousand two through, two thou, two thousand twenty-four, Clubhouse Drive, and one thousand one, Comanche Hills, by removing the area from a planned development zoning district, or PDD, and, and, and R1 single-family residential zoning district, and placing it within a residential cluster zoning district containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty fi, or fine of two thousand dollars, ordering publication, and providing, uh, for other matters related to the subject.
Hey, Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, ma'am. This was brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission last month, uh, excuse me, earlier this year, and they did look at this, uh, no, excuse me, twenty seventeen when this was annexed. A portion of this is in the original PD from nineteen ninety-nine, and a portion of this was zoned R1. Uh, the advertisement originally had all of Phase thirteen. Uh, just clarification for some of the neighbors, lots seven through twenty-one have been withdrawn. If I can get the mouse going here. This is Lot Seven, carrying down the west side of Clubhouse Drive and up these three lots to Lot Twenty-One. Those lots have been removed from the request, so they will remain R1 single-family. So we're just talking about the six villa lots that are on the northern portion of Clubhouse Road and the garden lots on the eastern side of Clubhouse Road. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and here's a example of the site plan for the villa lots. They'll be coming back to the Planning Commission and City Council as a conditional use permit for those zero lot lines. Uh, staff recommends case as well as the Planning Commission. Would you please answer any questions after the public hearing?
Okay. Uh, do we have anyone who wants to speak to this issue? All right. If not, public hearing is closed at six fifty-four, and again, we will go to council, uh, beginning with Mr. Vogel. One, one question per council member.
No, thank you.
You're all right?
Yeah.
Mr. Broody?
Um, is this connecting up to the property we just looked at?
Yes, it is. Uh, I use this map here. Phase fifteen is actually the extension of Comanche Hills Road, or Comanche Hills Drive, which ties in at this location for Phase thirteen.
Okay. And, and this is a procedural curiosity thing. So would, council, would we be seeing this if P&amp;Z had not approved the, at their last Thursday meeting? Would this be coming forward to us still?
Yes.
Public hearing? Okay.
Okay. Ms. Agner?
I don't have anything.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Agner? All right. I don't have anything. Uh, the, uh, we will proceed, and, uh, we need a, a motion and a second on this. Yeah. Do we have a motion to proceed?
I salute.
Okay. All right. I'll second it. Any discussion of that? Okay. All in favor by the upraised hand? Okay. Um, and six A passes. Okay. Public hearing, six B. Ms. Brown, if you'll read that for us.
Ordinance number twenty eighteen dash sixteen, amending the city's zoning code by changing the zoning district for lots fifty-two, fifty-three, and fifty-four, Block fourteen, the Parsons Edition, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and more commonly known as two thirteen, two fifteen, and two twenty-one, West Barnett Street, by removing the area from the R1A residential zoning district and placing it within an eleven C zoning district containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause, providing for the maximum penalty of, or fine of two thousand dollars, ordering publication, and providing other matters related to the subject.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a request to rezone this property. It was previously used as several different uses, one being restaurant, a bar, um, taxi service. It's had several different uses throughout its years. Uh, the request is consistent with Kerrville twenty, twenty fifty comprehensive plan. Uh, is guiding principle C six under the community and neighborhood character and placemaking encourages projects to celebrate and honor the character of each neighborhood and its culture, revitalize neighborhoods and create gathering places within them while avoiding displacement of citizens and their cultures. Uh, this reuse of the existing building certainly fits that guiding principle. This originally was presented to the Planning Commission as a PD. However, our ordinance requires that a PD be more than two acres. This property is smaller than that. And so we're working with staff. We've came up with eleven C, which is, the rest, the remainder of eleven C is nearby, and the list of proposed uses is very similar to that of the PD that was proposed, which should have a limited impact on the neighborhood. Staff is recommending, again, eleven C. The Planning Commission recommended it on September fifth. Uh, the parking, you can see in the site plan here, the parking area is in the back. Also have a rendering here showing the parking lot behind it with downlighting to have less impact on the neighborhood, proposing approximately thirty-two spaces based on the use and the square footage of the restaurant. By the zoning code, they would be required twenty-seven, uh, so they do meet the parking ratios, uh, obviously parking being a major impact within the neighborhood. Uh, they're trying to mitigate that as much as possible. If that, would you please answer any questions after the public hearing?
All right. Hey, do we have any people that want to address that issue?
Yes, sir. Bruce Drakey?
Uh, I think he just left. Oh, there he is.
Someone like him has left, though.
The applicant's here tonight with, with his lovely wife. Really what we wanted to do is, they have put together a video to kind of show you their vision of what the restaurant's going to look like, and if we could go ahead and start that, I'll just talk a little bit about some of the thoughts behind how this all started. We had some really good music, but we got worried about licensing, and so we thought would be better to be silent, so you're all stuck with hearing me. But really, what really drove this zoning change along Barnett in this older neighborhood is that we felt that it was a path to retaining some of our local history. There are many people, I'm sure, here in the audience who remember going to the Famous Door, hearing stories about the Famous Door, hearing music, using the grocery store there. I, I don't think there are anybody here tonight that may have used the taxi stand. It's been a barber shop. It's been so many things, and we wanted, we want to bring that fabric back to the community, back to this neighborhood, and, and, and have a place where people can engage in the, in the community and have what is, what Johnny loves to say is famous for foods, food, friends, food, and fun. The Famous Door is famous for friends, food, and fun. And it's been that way for over ninety years through its many different uses. Johnny Breaux, the, the current owner, is seeking to refurbish the property and work within the community. There, in fact, are, I think there are thirteen or fourteen letters of support from neighbors. Uh, there was a, a concern about the parking and the safety for children. Johnny and his wife are very concerned about that as well and want to work with the city and, and the police department and the fire department to make sure that this is a safe community spot. The other building on the property is actually slated to be a community center, that'd be classrooms, could be, uh, study areas, could be a, a community gathering place in addition to the restaurant. And, um, we have been working for many months, Drew and I, and other members of staff that have been super at trying to make this fit into the comprehensive plan twenty fifty and make it something really powerful and solid for the neighborhood. And I, we really appreciate you giving us this opportunity tonight to come before you. And again, the applicants here, if anybody has any questions after the public hearing.
Okay. Anybody else to speak to this? Okay. If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask Mr. Broadio, if you would, would you come to the podium?
Yeah. Johnny Breaux, one of my Josephine Ingram, Texas.
You have two other restaurants, is that right? What are they?
Uh, Real Ranch here in Kerrville, and we have the Longhorn Cafe in Hart.
Okay. All right. Um, I've got another question, but I need to do one question per person.
Oh, you don't. Go ahead.
Okay. The other question is, the, uh, did you grow up in that area?
Yes. Yeah. We, uh, yeah, that's a, that's one of the main things, uh, that we're, we love that neighborhood, and I mean, that's, my kids grew up there too, and, uh, and, uh, we're, we want to revitalize it. I mean, do something nice with that neighborhood.
Great, great. And you're active with the Doyle School Community Center?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to be one of your first customers.
Oh, good.
I probably shouldn't have said that if we're going to vote on this, but anyway. Okay. Anybody else?
I got, I got something, like, there's something I just noticed. I, I appreciate you doing this work, and I'm excited about this, but on the exterior view, is it, looks like the lot is on the, there's vacant lot on the right, but on the location map, it's on the left. Which one is it?
There's a, there, there was two houses on each side. The one on the left side has been removed. It's going to be the entrance to the parking lot.
Okay.
The one on the right-hand side, that's the one we're going to use for a community center.
Okay. Drew, can you pull up the, the red line on the, it's just, I don't know if that might be wrong. I'm not sure.
This one here.
See how on the front right there, there's vacant on the right, but go to the...
Right. So the, on the right-hand side, there is a house there. That's the one that would be part of the community center. And that's this house here. That house is going to remain. The house that was here has already been removed for access to the parking.
Can you go one more to the actual aerial view? See how, I guess, two oh nine, there's a, that's where the square's in the front, so you're looking at the front. It's on the left. On that other view, it's on the right. Is that...
The parcel data actually includes, um, this small little flag piece.
Okay.
I do, as far as I know, they do not own that, but that is tied to the parcel data from the appraisal district.
Okay.
So we honor that line, even though it's probably over notifying.
All right. Thank you.
So that's a notification line. It's not the actual change in the zone is going, is not including that red?
The change in zoning is tied to the, the legal description of those lots.
So is that little flag thing you're talking about going to get its change?
No, it's, it's outside of that.
Okay. All right.
All right. Um, any other questions from council?
Yeah, I got a couple. Um, so, back to the community center house, or whatever we're calling that thing. So in this artist's rendering, we've got a fence going around it, so for parking for that particular, the house thing, what's the idea where that would be?
I think, uh, we left two parking spaces for that house.
Okay.
On the backside of that house.
Okay. Um, and then the other is with regard to the parking, um, you got plenty of parking in the parking lot, right? Um, just a suggestion, not a requirement, just the one woman that was, that rode in asking about parking, you know, it'd be all on the street and everything. My thought was, those two do, the, I don't know if it's two or three doors, I guess, on the front act of the building? If those were made to be like emergency exit doors and not front doors, um, then people would be inclined to park in the back. If those are front doors that are open, I'm parking on the street and going right in the door. So, I mean, I see you've got this other door right on the, sort of, it's a, the disabled ramp.
There's actually one on each side.
Okay. So just a, just a thought to consider is all, to deal with that. And then the other question is to Drew, actually. Um, by, by doing this, um, or do we have, is, we're not doing spot zoning by doing this, are we?
It's supported through the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan for residential neighborhoods does talk about, um, allowing some local service retail, um, for that community, that neighborhood. Uh, our zoning code currently doesn't allow that mixed use by right in the R1A district. Um, so in a general sense, it would be spot zoning, but it's supported by the comprehensive plan without the...
But the spot zoning isn't so much about our plan, isn't it about, like, laws? I mean, are we allowed to do that? That's really all I'm asking. Are we allowed to pick a property and make it a certain zone?
With the support of the comprehensive plan, as far as that directive to guide those zoning decisions, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
I just, I wanted to say, I've drive past, I'm excited about what you're doing and watching your progress. I too had a concern about the parking, uh, and I would assume you can address that with some signage, and, and it is a neighborhood. I would also, if I lived there, I'd be concerned about kids and that kind of thing.
We're actually trying to purchase the properties that are around there so to make more parking.
To make more parking.
Because you know you're going to need it.
And I was worried if you had something going on in a community center, but you've got, it's lunchtime or something, that, that could become an issue. So, uh, I'm pleased to know that you're, you're looking at that, keeping that in mind. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Agner?
It's so nice to meet you. You know, this is one of the things we're so excited about, is something happening from a community owner in their community. So I, I applaud you, and I had a question about the square footage of the building as far as it relates to capacity, uh, what's your capacity might be?
It's around five hundred square feet.
Okay.
The restaurant built.
So how many people do you think that would allow for fire code purposes and...
Um, I believe it's around eighty, eighty, it's set up for eighty people.
Okay. And I've read the letter about the, the parking, and I, I just, I think George makes a good point about the entrance, because we are, we have tendency to use the most convenient entrance, so maybe something like that would help, but, so we just want to keep it safe, and you seem to have the same concern, so that's great. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Uh, we're ready for a motion on this item.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we, um, what, pass the ordinance number twenty eighteen dash sixteen on first read.
Okay. All right. We have a second?
I'll second.
Got two seconds. Mr. Vogel. Okay. Any further discussion, we're ready to vote. All in favor with the upraised hand? Okay. Good. Okay. We are ready to move to six C. Ms. Brown, if you'll read that for us.
Six C is ordinance number twenty eighteen dash fifteen.
Wait, 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 wait. Hold on. Public hearing, seven oh eight.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty eighteen dash fifteen, amending the city's zoning code by amending Article eleven I three, definitions and interpretations of words and phrases at Articles eleven one four through eleven one eleven, to amend the land use tables for various zoning districts to add parking structure and parking lot standalone as uses that are either permitted by right or as a conditional use within each specified district, containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty or fine of two thousand dollars, and ordering publication.
Thank you, ma'am. This is amendment to the zoning code to call out parking lots as standalone parking or as a parking structure, no parking garage, as a permitted and conditional use in different districts. Planning Commission started this discussion in January, February, and March, uh, had a couple workshops and a public hearing in June regarding this issue. The Planning and Zoning Commission determined that in most districts, the standalone parking lot and garage should be considered...
lot and garage should be considered conditional uses, and the Planning, excuse me, the P&amp;Z determined that in general, the standalone parking should not be allowed in residential neighborhoods. Multi-family district aside, multi-family does allow it as a conditional use. Now, the conditional use permit does require a public hearing notification through the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, so any of these districts would be required case by case to go through that process. As the Planning Commission looked at these different zoning districts, certainly gave difference to the river, the various creeks, key places around town, the gateways of Kerrville, and the potential hazards of just merely paving a lot, the aesthetic that it would have on the gateways, the impact it would have on the creeks and the river. And I'll briefly go through some of these districts. As I said, the commission agreed that the majority of these districts, parking as a, a surface lot or a garage should be considered as conditional use. However, in C16, the central city, 16, a parking lot is considered, a surface parking lot is considered as, by right, a permitted use. And E27, which is more or less an industrial district, was by right for surface parking. In all districts, the parking structure or parking garage would be a conditional use. And again, the residential districts, multifamily, R3, was the only district considered as a conditional use. And with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions after the public hearing.
All right, who do we have to speak to this matter?
Dr. Diane Fitch.
I am actually speaking also for Mary Lee Stewart. Do I do those separately or just both in a row?
I'll speak for myself.
Okay, I'm going to speak for myself first. Thank you, Mayor Blackburn, and council members, for the opportunity once again to voice my concerns on this matter. I am protesting the continuous, won't take no for an answer, persistence of Bruce Motherall to build his parking facility in the Clay Street residential neighborhood, despite the overwhelming objection of virtually all of his neighbors. I have particular interest in the preservation of this unique Kerrville neighborhood. This is the kind of historic treasure that is the heart of our lovely city. We were heartened and encouraged when the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then the City Council, soundly rejected Bruce Motherall's parking lot proposal based on the unanimous objection of his neighbors. But Mr. Motherall keeps coming back again and again insisting on having his way. Again, we were hopeful when the Planning and Zoning Commission agreed that careful consideration would be necessary to determine the direct impact to the adjacent area and place conditions on each case accordingly to address those concerns. But here he is again, now armed with an attorney, determined to have his parking lot in spite of the threats to the safety and peace of mind of Clay Street residents. In this case, allowing gateway business traffic, Zone N21 into a residential neighborhood, Zone RT, completely ignores the neighborhood concept, the safety of residents who must walk in the street, no sidewalks, and it rewrites the existing, well-thought-out codes to favor one particularly obstinate businessman who has been pushing for several years to get his parking lot for his benefit only. He apparently has no concern or interest in the needs and desires of anyone else who lives on Clay Street, including the elderly, retired, and disabled residents of this historic neighborhood. Mr. Motherall's proposed parking lot has already become a giant eyesore on beautiful Clay Street, a mountain of junk and rubble left to the neighborhood view in the proposed and mostly cleared lot for months. We who have been protesting this atrocity for months are dumbfounded that this has been allowed to continue. Please, please, help the residents of Clay Street put an end to this threat to their beloved neighborhood once and for all. Please remove this blight and give these frustrated Kerrville citizens relief from Bruce Motherall and his self-interest. Thank you.
All right, okay. How quickly can you speak for Ms. Stewart?
Okay, hers is much shorter.
Okay, all right.
She would love to be here tonight, but she's ill. She writes, "The Planning and Zoning Commission of Kerrville, Texas voted unanimously on June 21, 2018, to disallow parking lots in residential transition zones in the city. Further, the commission okayed a proposal to add wording that applies to all districts, an application process for parking facility. You can help keep my neighborhood free of parking lots by supporting the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to reject parking facilities in a residential neighborhood. If the City Council goes against the Planning and Zoning Decision, the veiled proposal would be a large parking lot. This parking lot's purpose would be to serve the commercial business directly behind in the commercially zoned city gateway. This directly violates the zoning codes. This is important to me because the parking lot would change the residential atmosphere and safety of the, the area comprised of a respectable retirement community and more than a dozen private homes, including my home, which I have lived in for decades. I appreciate any support you can give this problem. Thank you, Mary Lee Stewart."
All right, who else would like to speak to this? Who said that?
Wayne Franklin.
Mayor of City Council, thank you. My name is Wayne Franklin. My residence is 916 Rimshell. I also own two properties on Clay Street, 819 and 821. I understand we're talking about a code language amendments that would allow some changes on what we put in different places. That part I don't have an issue with. It's, are we going to interpret this, are we going to listen to what's going on in the neighborhood for that parking proposal? So, I'm protesting any effort toward a parking facility in the Clay Street residential neighborhood. This is my neighborhood, and it does hold a unique walking access to central business districts. This is something that we really want to see, access to downtown. My heartfelt support goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission suggesting that same thing that Dr. Diane was saying, that they, you have a careful consideration for a particular application. In this case, allowing a gateway business traffic at Zone N21, that's right down Sydney Baker, the gateway, and allowing that into a residential neighborhood, RT, completely ignores the neighborhood concept, the safety of the residents who must walk in the street because we don't have any sidewalks, like there's many places in town. And we've got a retirement neighborhood there. Most of those people don't drive. They use motorized wheelchairs and carts and stuff like that. People are walking. We're going to put a parking lot off of, off of Sydney Baker that comes straight through, that's, doesn't make any sense to me. So, we are talking about rewriting existing and well-thought-through codes to favor Mr. Motherall, who's been pushing that issue for several years, and particularly me personally. So let's not forget to mention the general aesthetics as well. That pile of rubble is still there, by the way. Have you seen the mountain of junk lately? I mean, take a look at that, it's absolutely, it's incredible. So, it, it just has the appearance that there's some hidden, go ahead and do it because he's removed a building. There's the house that was there, that's all been removed, the lot's been cleared, the fence and the curbing in the back of his restaurant has already been removed, there's cars parking in there. You know, it seems to me, somebody said, you've already got the approval, so what's going on? I, I say, any responsible N21 Sydney Baker business has no business accessing Clay Street via a removed mid-block Clay Street residence. So I ask you, as I've written to all of you too, you appreciate a code change to allow a parking lot directly behind your own home. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. Let's see if we have another speaker, and then we'll go to questions.
Okay, I'll be right here.
Okay.
I don't have any more.
It's a public hearing, you can come in.
Yeah, we've got a speaker here, and then, and then Mr. Seigman. Okay, right, yes. Are you going to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Mind if I hand out, I don't have a fancy video or anything, but I've got some handouts that I'd like to, that I'm going to bring to you.
My name is David Brock, and I do represent Bruce Motherall, but this isn't a request for a conditional use permit or variance. It's my understanding it's a first reading of ordinance, and I'd like to, to urge the council to consider the inclusion of parking and parking structure within the RT zoning for a couple of reasons. First of all, it affords the, the city the flexibility, this is a mixed-use, it's a transitional-type zoning area anyway, which are, if you look at the, if you look at the pictures, probably, I don't know, fifty percent of, the, by the way, the orange in the picture is commercial, existing commercial on Clay Street. The yellow is church, and then the blue is residential. So at least fifty percent of it is non-residential, you know, already. And then if you look at the aerial photograph, you'll see there's already existing, at least two existing parking lots off, off of Clay Street. I think that, I, I think including that and allowing, you know, parking, whether standalone or used in connection with an existing building, does allow the city that flexibility and can mitigate, you know, some of these circumstances in my work of hardship or inequities. There's already, the, the lots in question, and I'll speak to, to Mr. Motherall's, or 10 and 11, there's already a parking lot next door to it, you know, and, and, you know, I don't see how adding another parking lot is going to be that detrimental to the aesthetics or the transitory goal of the city easing from a commercial off of Sydney Baker into, into Clay. Furthermore, I submit that a parking lot is not inherently unsightly. You'll see in your package, you know, some, some renditions that we've had that, that, you know, that can be imposed as a condition of, of, of allowing the parking lot, and it can be, it can be screened with landscaping, it can, it actually can be a very, you know, at least not an unattractive, you know, position. I, I just, to be real honest, I intentionally did not bring pictures of anything else on the street because I did not want to offend anybody, I don't think the professional are appropriate. But I will submit, if you drive down Clay, a parking lot with nice landscaping is not going to distract from the aesthetics of that, you know, of that portion of, of the street. Furthermore, you know, it's at least in compliance with the, if you look at the 2004 land use plan, you know, that area was all Zarn Zone Commercial, and it's, and it's, you know, allowing at least a parking lot that's used in connection with a car, and a legal use on Sydney Baker would at least not offend that land plan that was approved in, in 2004. And, and so for that, I just wanted to urge the, the council's consideration of that. I think it, it possibly could be controlled by the imposition of, of conditions. I don't think in, in a residential transition neighborhood, a parking, this is not a commercial parking lot, it's used in connection with existing legally, you know, a use that's in conformity with the zoning regulations, and I think it just gives the council another tool to not be so in the box and rigid, and to consider things at least on a case by case basis, especially in, in transition neighborhoods. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Seigman.
My name is Mike Seigman, I live at 4,000 Comanche Trace Drive, and I actually served on the Planning and Zoning Commission as we went through this process for four or five months, trying to determine what we wanted to do. We started with a public hearing about the possibility of allowing conditional use. We had a strong indication from the neighborhood that they did not approve of that, they were not interested in having parking lots next door to them. The transitional, residential transitional neighborhood allows for any, a business to be used there in conjunction with a parking lot as long as it stays in the identity of the residential area. We went through the whole process, this was a tough decision for us, we were unanimous in deciding that changing this code to allow in, in all areas in the city of Kerrville with the exception of the residential areas, to have these standalone parking structures or parking garages. We got a lot of advice and insight from Mike Hayes, who was with us in all of our meetings, about what would happen if we added in there the possibility of having a conditional use for a parking lot in this residential neighborhood, and we started with one, and then someone else comes and asks for one, and we don't really know whether that's a good idea or not, we, we faced the same problem. And for us, I think, not speaking for the rest of the commission, but for myself, and I think what everybody considered was, our responsibility, as is your responsibility, is to protect the interests of the citizens of Kerrville. This is a residential transitional neighborhood, it is not a, 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 a commercial neighborhood, it is not there to build parking lot after parking lot after parking lot. We felt it was our duty to protect the citizens of Kerrville, they spoke to us. I think it is your duty as the City Council to do the same thing and protect the citizens of Kerrville that live in that neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Braudio, we have anyone else to speak to this?
Bruce Drakey.
Bruce, if you'll come to the-
One of the things that keeps-
Wait, state name and address.
Bruce Drakey, 615 Earl Garrett. One of the things that has been left out of this conversation at every meeting, or glossed over perhaps is a better way to say it, is one of the characteristics of the RT, if we look at that zoning core, core code, is that it's to preserve the residential character. And if we look at Earl Garrett, if we look at Water Street, West Water Street, we see that happening, and one of the requirements within that code is that parking has to be behind the building. Behind my building, I have 13 parks. I had to pay for all the concrete to put it back there. I bought it that way, but I paid for it. Mr. Brinkman has that, Mr. Morris has that, Mr. Insu isn't here has that. There are all, all the people up and down Clay Street, Earl Garrett, Water Street, Texas Finial, the JP's Building there on West Water, if we look at building after building, we see that the owners have put parking behind. Mr. Motherall could have done that, there was a building on this lot, he could have created parking behind. He has a lot of a size that could have easily provided a dozen parking spots, that would have increased the size of his parking lot on N21 about 25 percent. He chose instead to take another path, and yes, there are parking lots on there, the church has one, the consulting, the consulting center uses the church. Mr. Ins has a parking lot behind, but we don't want to continue those mistakes, it's like, it's like making mistakes with our sidewalk ordinance. Every time we grant a variance because it's a sidewalk that goes nowhere, we're that much farther away from ever having sidewalks in the city, and we've heard that we need those sidewalks here again tonight. And yet, every time somebody comes up and says, well, the sidewalk doesn't lead anywhere, well, so we pass a variance, then it, once again, we're not adding to that structure that we need throughout the city and the whole point of the sidewalk ordinance. This is no different. Just, just because there are parking lots there already, doesn't mean that we should add another one and do something to take away from the residential character, which is exactly what the RT is about. That if we read the verbiage in there, the whole point is the building's in front, it looks like a house, the parking's behind. Mr. Motherall had that opportunity, and he can still do it today, I'm sure he doesn't want to build a building again, but he took the building down. Just because there's another parking lot there doesn't mean that we should change the whole nature of that zone, and it's one of the most successful zones for small businesses in Kerrville today. You have beautiful professional businesses up and down the RT zones, and all of them except one, I think, and we're working on that. And that's it, that's why we love those neighborhoods and we like to go see Peter Lewis, or Texas Finial, or JP's office of the consulting, or my office, I hope, or Harvey's office, Morris Silver, Jeremy Itz, and, and his offices, the Colt Consulting Center that's down there on Clay Street. That's what we want, that's the point, that's what we're trying to create. Silver, Jeremy Itz, and his offices, the Colt Consulting Center that's down there on Clay Street, that's what we want, that's the point, that's what we're trying to create, keep that fabric intact. Mr. Brock, I'd like to introduce myself, I'm Bruce Strake.
Nice to meet you, Bruce.
We're going to talk some more.
Okay, anyone else to speak to that issue? If not, we're out of the public hearing at 7:30, and open it to to council, and again, you'll do one question, and we'll start with Mr. Pokel.
I don't really have a question, I'll make a statement, and I support what the NC has come up with in protecting residential neighborhoods.
Okay, with all due respect, I've got questions that kind of like connect, and if we do round robin, it kind of makes it strange for the person that's going to answer them, so I'm like, it's not a long time, but
Briefly go to it.
Okay, well, the first thing is, the to Mr. Strakey's point, he couldn't have actually used the parking behind an RT zone building to service the the lot in his N-21, because that would have been against the zoning code of 1114G, which we're going to amend, or we're going to try and amend. So there's that. The grandfather in of parking lots that we're referencing on Clay Street is kind of missing the point, because those are parking lots servicing buildings that were in the RT zone already, so it's not the same thing, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. But having said that, the I the the changes that we're making in here, I would really like to see, there's two zones that we're making it by permit, or permitted by right. I'd like people to consider flipping those to conditional as well, simply because we're talking about something, a standalone parking lot, that really serves only one purpose, which generally is in a densely populated area, whether it's densely business-populated or residential, that you're sharing the parking in whatever this thing is among multiple zones. That happens so rarely, I don't know that it's a big deal if we make, those rare occurrences come before P and Z for a conditional use, so that that would be one suggestion. The other is, 1114G, it's not in the land use tables, it's this other part of the zoning code that we're we're suggesting an amendment to it. I believe it was actually pretty correct the way it was before it, where it just says also zone, it's in the packet, but it basically is talking about cross-use of the 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 zones for a parking lot, and I'm just going to read it because I'm going to ask for clarification here, right, so, "No person shall use property located in one zoning district to provide parking for or access to a use located on property located in another zoning district", which is what we have here, "unless the property being used for said parking or access is also zoned to permit the use for which such parking access is desired." That's the way the original was written. And what that means is, whatever's zoned in, in this case, N-21, right, that's what that zone is, if if whatever's in there that's needing parking is not permitted use in the RT zone, then they wouldn't be able to create this parking lot access, whether it's behind an RT building or whatever it is, you can't use parking to do that, that's the way it was.
All right, let's let's stop there and and get a clarification.
Although it may not be clear in the code, I think the intent was for required parking spaces, so in this case, Mr. Motherall Shopping Center meets the parking requirement for the N-21 zoning and the uses in that building. So the way the code's written today, he could not put a parking lot in a different zoning district for the required parking. He chose to have additional parking that's shared amongst his property or or others.
Well, okay, that might be about that might be about the parking, and it might be a fine line, would be debatable, but it says provide parking for or access to a use, so that would imply he can't even drive onto it, that's access to. So what we're and and so that means that without any change, even if we had given conditional use to a parking lot in the RT zone, he wouldn't have been able to access that parking lot from his N-21. Now, the amendment that we're changing this to, the words that we're doing, is we're saying, now, if the property where his restaurant is, so this example to make it real, says, "As a matter of right or permitted upon issuance of a conditional use permit", okay? So what that means is, even if he doesn't have a conditional use in this RT zone, if it's a possibility that he could get one, then we would allow him to access it, correct? You see what I'm asking, at least?
Right.
Okay, so in in my mind, the code was written clearly before, we don't want we don't want to bleed zones into other zones, that's really what that's about. So I would argue that we shouldn't be making this amendment, we should say, maybe clarify it so that it says, "As a matter of right", so it's clear, but take out the "or permitted upon issuance of a conditional use", because, again, it's not it's not a known entity that you could even get that conditional use, so it seems kind of presumptuous, you know what I'm saying?
I think the reference was, because we have different zoning districts that are allowed by right or conditional use, a different and adjacent zoning district still could not access that standalone parking lot unless the conditional use permit were issued.
Right, but the I'm not sure that that's what that says, and I'm just saying that if we clarified it, we would be clarifying it, and it would eliminate that as a gray area, correct?
We'll look at that.
And so that that's going to end up anyways.
Mr. Hattie, do you have a comment on that?
Well, I tried, I'm not sure I follow it, I added the language to make it clear, particularly as to what the proposed ordinance does, so I don't I don't follow completely the argument that Mr. Rudy is making. I think the the way I've clarified the the section lends to the overall amendments that you all are considering tonight, so I stand by it, I'm happy to look at it between the readings, this is the first time this has been brought up to my attention, you know, I hate to kind of, you know, look at it now when Mr. Rudy's been, you know, probably studying it, so I'm happy to look at it between readings, but I think it's clear as it's written.
No, I I I do want to clarify, since you said you're not real clear, basically, it's like this, if this is if this just says, "To permit as a matter of right", and we leave it like that, if it was like that, and we were to approve conditional use as a possibility of a standalone parking lot in the RT zone, okay? And he got the conditional use of the parking lot in the RT zone, he was granted that, according to the amendment or the the modified words, if it just said, "As a matter of right" and left off the permitted conditional issuance of, would he be able to put parking on that lot utilized by the N-21?
I think what, yes, but I think what you're going to what's going to happen is, "A matter of right", that phrase means something, and that means there's a P.
Right.
And so if you don't if you don't put, in my opinion, if you don't put "or permitted upon issuance of a conditional use permit", then are you not talking about the CUP, that that's mine?
No, actually, this is, we're talking about the 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 restaurant, that strip center is the one that has to be permitted by right in the RT zone, that's what this is talking about, this is talking about
Again, I don't want to sit here and and I don't think it's I don't think it's efficient for me to do that at this point, but I'm happy to do it between the readings.
Yeah, I would say, okay, you're going to look at that between readings.
I will.
You'll come back second time and see if we need to change that, okay? All right, any other questions from the council?
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion on 6D as it is written? I'm sorry, 6C, 6C.
I move to approve ordinance number 2018-15 as recommended by P and Z.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, and the motion carries for one.
All opposed.
Oh, all opposed, yeah, there you go. Okay. Let me just say this, that I regret how long this has gone on, and and I think there's been some miscommunication along the way, and I want to say, Mr. Motherall is a friend, but I believe we have done the right thing. Okay. Folks?
I'll recuse myself.
Yeah, so it, okay. The item, let me be clear, item passes for one. Okay, before we move to the next public hearing, we have got the issue of the TIRS, we've got the ad valorem tax, and before that, the annual budget, several other items, and then executive session, so I'm going to call for about a ten-minute break, ten minutes, at 7:40. The city council will be back in session, and We're in a public hearing, and this is for item 6D, Ms. Brown will read the agenda, item into the record.
Mayor, before she does that, Councilman Vocals filed an affidavit of conflict of interest, so
Yes, sir.
He'll he'll be absent during this this deliberation of this.
All right, okay. Yeah, you don't don't go off. Yeah, okay, conflict of interest for this item. Okay.
Item 6D is ordinance number 2018-19. Designating a contiguous geographic area within the city as a reinvestment zone pursuant to Chapter 311 of Texas Tax Code to be known as a reinvestment zone number one, City of Kerrville describing the boundaries of the zone, creating a board of directors for the zone, establishing a tax increment fund for the zone, containing findings related to the creation of the zone, providing a date for the termination of the zone, providing that the zone will take effect immediately upon passage of the ordinance, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date.
All right, I'm going to ask the city manager to open the briefing on the item.
Thank you, Mayor, so we have been discussing the possibility of creating a TIRS for the downtown for a good nine months, perhaps longer, as part of the Kerrville 2050 process, it came out of committee, was included in the plan, has been looked at previously as a revitalization tool for the downtown, and has been successful in many other downtowns throughout the state. So we also had a workshop, and we've had several public meetings, so this would be, as noted here, the first public hearing or the public hearing in first reading, with the second reading on the 25th. With that, I'm going to turn it over to David Pettit, who we've been working with for the creation of the zone, and he has a brief presentation that he's going to go through with you all, covering some of the same information that you saw previously, but not quite as in depth, so David.
Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for having me again, I think this is our third or fourth time together, and I'm going to tell you the time and not how the watch is built, but also making myself available for any questions as a follow-up. We're here to talk about ordinance 2018-19, the creation of tax increment reinvestment zone number one, City of Kerrville. I wanted to talk to you because there are some people in the audience that do not know about the TIRS concept and hit some of the highlights, I also want to talk about the TIRS creation process that we're going through, the proposed TIRS number one, the details that are behind that, the next steps, as the city manager mentioned, this is the first of two readings, and this is also a public hearing, and answer any questions that you might have. So tax increment financing, TIF, is a tool that incentivizes economic development within a tax increment reinvestment zone, so two different terms there, we got to give acronyms because we're in government, you know, so we have TIF and TIRS. It's governed by the Tax Code, Chapter 311, the Texas Tax Code. There's approximately, according to the State Comptroller's Office, three hundred and thirteen TIRS districts throughout the state. This is this number is incredibly low, not all cities report TIRS creation to the State Comptroller, because there's no penalty for not reporting those TIRS, so there are a number of different TIRS. I'm approaching creating close to a hundred and fifty within the state, so I consider myself an expert in creation of TIRS and the nuances of TIRS, and so I like to say that most successful downtowns throughout the state of Texas have implemented this tool, and it's been a tool that has been widely used, and once again, it's just one tool in the toolkit to helping encourage investment. Taxing entities essentially contribute ad valorem taxes received from incremental revenues on property within the TIRS. TIRS can pay for cost of public works, public improvements, economic development grants, or other projects benefiting the zone, so this is incremental, it's not money that you're currently receiving. This is the academic chart that everybody uses when talking about tax increment financing, but the way I'd like to say is, just imagine an area that the city has decided to designate, and basically, you're going to establish a base within that year, and you say, any new growth that occurs, those new revenues are going to go into a pot of a a a new pot called a TIRS fund, and those are going to go fund improvements that are outlined in a plan. So basically, it's no new taxes, but it's the use of incremental taxes that occur through, and that's where my new slide, my next slide comes from, is new construction or investment or annual appreciation of real property, organic growth. Organic growth is, we know that our homes always tend to grow, and we know the legislature sometimes is constantly looking at how much those grow, but those are the only two ways that you can generate increment, new construction, new investment, and annual appreciation and existing property values. So we call this the the TIRS creation, I call it the Texas Two-Step. You have the creation district, the creation ordinance, and the project and financing plan ordinance. Chapter 311 outlines the various procedures for those two ordinances. The creation ordinance that we're talking about tonight discusses the boundary, the term, the TIF board, and a preliminary project and financing plan. Step two is the TIF board meets and approves the TIF project and financing plan, and then it comes back to you for two separate readings as well. So that's where we talk about, there's two separate components to the overall TIF, there's the creation ordinance and the project and financing plan ordinance. So let's talk about the TIRS that we have here today. The goal of TIRS number one is to fund construction of needed public infrastructure and to encourage private development that will yield additional tax revenue to all taxing jurisdiction. It includes four hundred and seventy-seven acres located in the downtown Kerrville area. The base year, if we create it this year, would be 2018, we propose a thirty-year term, TIFs do take a while to get up and running, I think, as we talked about, typically three to five years to get any significant, unless you have an immediate project in the queue, and we're proposing the city's participation at a hundred percent. We work very carefully with city staff to encompass the downtown area and and work to develop boundaries that reflect new opportunities, new redevelopment opportunities, new development opportunities, and those that would give the biggest bang for the buck. The overall, this is where I get into my crystal ball that says, if we had this tool, and working with staff and looking at the overall land plan, what could happen? So we looked out over a number of years and said, what could happen? And we have a total of seventy-three million dollars worth of potential improvements that include retail, office, hotel, as well as residential development. If all that occurs, and If all that occurs, and those are assumptions, so there's a lot of things that go into assumptions, but we like to be conservative, and I think that we've run these through with the city manager and the W. City Manager and staff, we feel that this would generate about $17 million worth of improvements. It could be more, could be less. But what we have here is basically the proposed project cost, which gives you a menu of items of how you would spend this money. So that would include water facilities, sanitary sewer, your basic infrastructure, transit parking, street intersection improvements, open space, economic development grants to be able to help some of those businesses that are trying to start up in that designated area. And so, as I mentioned before, this is the Texas Two-Step. We are at the first reading in public hearing, which is tonight, the second reading on the 25th. And what we are talking about tonight is the boundary, term, city participation, TIF board, and preliminary plan, which are all part of your packet. Once those are completed, the TIF board will meet and discuss that plan, and then move forward with a final project and financing plan to bring forward for two readings in front of the city council. I think a couple of questions that have come up just recently are that this is solely a, when we create the TIF and actually in the ordinance, you are the TIF board. So there's what I like to say a "mother may I," and there's two "mother may i's." And we specifically exclude the authority of the TIF board to issue bonds, eminent domain, police powers, zoning powers, any of those powers. And so any project that moves forward has to go through that TERS board, and then it has to go before you for final approval. So there is another Texas Two-Step, or what one of my clients coined the "mother may I" twice, in order to make sure that this project, or any project that moves forward, is fully vetted and allows for the biggest return on investment. And so as projects move forward, staff will look at, what's the appropriate use of the funds? Do we want to pay for public infrastructure or grants? And then also, what's the return on investment? So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions from the audience?
We have a speaker, Don Vogel.
My name is Don Vogel, and I live at 438 Cornell Drive. Well, actually, I live at 212 Clay Street, but I sleep at 438 Cornell.
Right, right.
My brother and I, and my dad, started our business in 1972. He was city manager here in the early '60s. And then since 1972, we've been operating this engineering and surveying business. Now it's just surveying. And in that building since 1975. So we've been there almost 50 years. I'd like to be there another 50 years, and I don't know, I'm not saying I'm against the TERS or for the TERS. I just don't know how it affects me. And my business is not generated by foot traffic or, you know, people just walking in. We have clients, and we have Realtors who bring us jobs. All that my brother and I want to be able to do is keep existing the way we've been existing. And I know what he's been saying, there's lots of value that can be brought to the community, and I don't have a problem with that. And I don't have a problem with growth or economic growth. I have a problem with somebody comes and tells me, well, we decided what you're doing is not good for the downtown, so we want to take you out. That I have a big problem with. And I think there are probably other people in that 477 acres that would have that same thought. I don't see the future like he was saying. I don't know what's going to happen. I know I want to stay in business. I'm not ready to retire, and I'm not ready to move. We've had people try to buy our building often over the years. All I'm going to do is preserve, just like the people on Clay Street. I want to preserve what I've got. I don't want anybody telling me, well, what you're doing is not good for the city of Kerrville. We've been working for the city of Kerrville's people, doing surveys and engineering projects for nearly 50 years. I want to keep doing what I'm doing without somebody telling me I've got to go. So as long as what y'all are doing, and I heard him say the term eminent domain, that the TIF doesn't, but the TERS does. Well, if the TERS board has the power from eminent domain to take me out of the picture, I have a problem with that. So, and I imagine there are other people in this building and other people in that 477 acres that would have that same problem.
Right.
So I, my brother and I leave Vogel. We want to stay where we are. We don't want to have to move. We don't want to have people, you know, telling us, there's a better thing for what your property is. I don't have, I don't have any use for that kind of...
Sure.
Attitude. So that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah. Are y'all any kin to the Vogel that's on the city council?
I'm, I'll defer that to Lee.
Okay, all right.
He happens to be his father.
Yeah.
And he happens to be my brother, so I guess...
Just to clarify, though, the Presbyterian Church thinks you're Vincent's father, right?
Well, they kicked us all three out.
Okay.
Peter, why did you raise that? Come on. All right. Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Pettit, would you respond to that?
And I'm sorry if I misspoke, and I know that I've spoken with the city attorney, is that eminent domain for economic development purposes with the TERS board and with the city council is not allowed, and it's not allowed by the Texas Constitution. So, and I would defer to the city attorney to affirm that, but I've been, like I said, worked on a number of different, these TIFs, and have never seen a purpose to where economic development has forced. And this is also not a land use. It's talking about people moving forward, like the gentleman that was with the restaurant, and providing them with incentives to be able to do something with their property that they otherwise couldn't.
Okay, all right. Okay, do we have other speakers?
David Jones.
My name is Thomas David Jones, 207 Lakewood. I have a couple of points, three actually. My wife Sammy and my family owns property in 223 Clay Street. I am not the David Jones that everybody looks to on Friday night. I'm Thomas David Jones. Tell me again about eminent domain. The scar tissue going up my back is from LCRAs, and there's no question that they have eminent domain. So what, tell me the difference, please.
And like I said, this is, within TERS, we've never had eminent domain, and so it's never really become an issue. City council obviously has eminent domain powers for public use purposes, but there has to be a public use that's associated with it. But the Texas Legislature came down very, very hard on anything that was remotely related to economic development. So I can tell you that on a project that I worked in Fort Worth, that we have a number of different properties, the Basses own 86, the Bass family owns 86 properties, there's still several holdouts, you know, that they would love to own, but that's a private transaction between two parties. So eminent domain is not a part of the TERS, and it's not allowed by city council for economic development purposes. So that's the simple truth of it.
Do I get his time back?
Yeah, yeah.
Let me go back to my prepared remarks. I am in favor of the reinvestment zone. I was able to work on the 2050 project. My assignment was to be the chairman of the Downtown Revitalization Subcommittee, and we had a whole lot of mother-esque sort of thing, but it was, you know, if we had some ham, we could have some ham and eggs if we had some eggs. If we had some public development, you know, if we had some buildup, had some wider sidewalks, then we could put this together and have a package and whatever else. Many great ideas, many of them made them into the plan. And so it has been my business experience that when you, you know, when you, and I ran several small businesses, that you, you know, you don't know you need a second lawyer until you get the first one. You don't, you don't know what you're doing really until at the end of the year, you give the books to the CPA and say, what happened? So he's really a historian. And so, you know, the insurance agent is asked to save me, you know, and don't cost me very much, you know, get me out of trouble. But you get to the point where you say you've got to have somebody that can really do something, and so now citizens have spent the time to pull the plan together. We have such a competent city staff now. We've got a whole lot of real, solid projects. We have in the language on this, a set timeframe, review, steps, whatever else. I think it's something that we were asked to take a step of faith on quite a bit of the 2015 plan. I think this doesn't take that much more faith to say that this is a tool that we can certainly make good use of.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have another speaker?
John Harrison.
John Harrison, 291 Dry Hall. I am not a property owner in this zone, but I just thought I'd get up and talk about one part of this is that I saw this on the agenda really Saturday morning, and I had lots of questions. It is, it is question after question after question. I got, thanks to Delane, I got a copy of the presentation that the consultant made. I still have questions. So I started emailing the city staff, and I bet we went back and forth over the weekend and then Monday morning several times. And quite honestly, by noon Monday, I understood this in a good way. And I can tell you that all it takes is a little bit of dialogue, and we can get, we can find an understanding of what this is and not go to social media and hear a lot of rumors about what this is or is it isn't. I'm here to support what you all have before you tonight, and I'd encourage council to go ahead and approve this, the TERS and the TIF. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay?
Bruce Stricki.
Bruce Stricki, 615-year-old Garrett. I am a property owner in the, in the proposed, in both scenarios. And I come here mostly tonight in support of this personally, and I'd also like to share, anecdotally, a straw poll that I had the privilege of being able to take. As a director on the local Board of Realtors and a member of the Historic Downtown Business Alliance, I invited a number of community folks in the area that are interested in this issue or have businesses and/or properties in the area to a meeting, a formal meeting at the Board of Realtors. We had reasonably good show up. It was great. And during that process, we went through a lot of questions. Mr. McDaniels was gracious enough to come and share information that I didn't have with me. Mayor Blackburn also graced us with his presence. And through that, we had a meeting lasted a little over an hour, and in the process of the meeting, basically took a straw poll of support or non-support of the idea in general. And so that straw poll was that people were supportive, and we had some really good questions asked, and the answers came back like John mentioned. Staff has been wonderful on responding to requests, people that I know, of asking their questions and getting answers. And so I think this is a great opportunity as a commercial broker here in town to focus on a part of town that has been discussed in the community since before I moved here with, especially accelerated with the leaving of the hospital. And how do we redevelop that area and bring it back? And we see it starting with the work down at G Street and some other buildings right in the downtown core, and some of the work that Mr. Itz is doing up on Clay Street, and thinking about some things that are going to happen just this side of Francisco Lemus. And so there's, there's a lot of interest in that area, but it's sporadic and it's spaced out. And if we could bring this tool to focus every, to focus money that's generated in that area, to go back to improving that area and rebuilding our downtown to what it was back in the, in the, in the '50s, I really think that we would look back 30 years from now and be proud of what we've done. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We have another person to speak.
Harvey Brinkman.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Harvey Brinkman, 306 River Hill. I do own properties in the areas. I am excited about this opportunity for businesses in these areas to have a chance to expand or do other things that will benefit other generations, basically. So I am not going to go any longer than others say. I'm here in support. I hope it passes.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Betsy Roden.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. My name is Betsy Roden at 288 Overlook in Kerrville. I was born and raised here. My family had been here forever and ever and ever. We love Kerrville. My husband and I have a little property on Water Street, and then with a bunch of family members, we have another property on Main Street. I'm really concerned about this. We only heard about it Friday. Someone said that all the stakeholders were supposed to be notified, and we, we didn't know anything. We just heard about it last Friday. So I'm not sure I have enough information to ask an intelligent question or to make an intelligent comment, but two concerns that I wanted to mention were the taxes. I just read in the paper about a place in Austin who was so overtaxed for a similar thing like this. They've been there forever and ever and ever. Hills Cafe, maybe you've been there. If you could eat the whole steak, you got it for free. And they're going out of business because they were overtaxed. So that is always a big concern, even though this sounds like it's going to be good for the area, and I hope that's the case. Like I said, I really don't know very much about it yet. My other concern is the eminent domain. If it's not a possibility, why was it left in there? Why was it left in the literature and all that sort of thing if there's no way that could possibly happen? Because that would really be a real hardship on, you know, a lot of the people that were involved in that. So I would just like to ask, I think I heard tonight that this is only the first reading. You're not actually going to vote on anything tonight, and possibly you could get together with all of the business owners in this zone and give them a chance to express their concerns and ask questions before the city, it doesn't even sound like Kerrville to me, just makes a big decision on their own about what they're going to do and how they're going to do it. So I would appreciate that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, do we have any other speakers? Okay. Ms., okay, it's a public hearing. You need to come to the podium, please.
My name is Julia Ralph. My, my mother has a business on Pascal Street. Yesterday was my first time hearing about this TIF or whatever the acronym is. And I got more information from my aisle neighbor there, so I'm just trying to digest what, what it means. And my, kind of a question that came up when he was going about, like, this will help with infrastructure and so off, because it sounds wonderful. I mean, everything about it sounds great, but what I'm wondering is, if there's money that's going to be set aside and that's going to be used for infrastructure and such, does that mean in the future that that whole area is only going to depend on this pot of money? For, for, like, our street is bad, you know, and there's not enough money in the pot, that kind of thing.
Yeah. Mr. Pettit, you want to respond to that? Yeah?
The TERS supplements the city's ongoing capital improvement program and its ongoing budget process. So as you approve a budget, this would only be additional funds that would be funding for those capital improvements or those typical improvements that would be made through the annual budget process. So, and once again, this is about, instead of those dollars going into the city and people having to come to you on an individual basis, the city... people having to come to you on an individual basis, the city is making a decision about the zone as a whole that any new increases in revenue, everybody pays the same amount of taxes, it's just any new revenue from new construction or organic growth, that those dollars are committed to that area to help improve that area. But this does not circumvent the normal budget process or the capital improvement program.
Okay. Do you have something to ask? Okay, all right. Okay. At 8:20, we are out of the public hearing, and we're going to open some questions to the, questions to the council. And this time, I'm going to start with Ms. Segerman over here to my left.
Thank you. I'm so excited. Well, first of all, I would like to say that I wholeheartedly agree with what you say about staying in the place of business you've been for 50-plus years. It would not be my desire to see that change in any way. In fact, I would like to think that you might benefit from some of the amenities that would occur in your neighborhood that aren't there now, or we can do something to improve your convenience of your guest parking, whatever it could be. So I never understood this program to have an effect on moving you out of your place of business, any of you. So just to be clear, that, I wouldn't support something like that. I believe this is a great program. I think, I read a book called Our Towns. It was written by a couple that flew for four years, 100,000 miles all around the country. They visited towns very similar to ours, and they found the one common denominator that made them most successful was a healthy downtown. So I feel that this was probably the reason this zone is picked, because a healthy downtown gives residual health to the rest of the community. It's like the heart valve of the community. I know Sue Timman made a comment about, she's been here 20 years, and there's been some, just, you know, it's been desolate downtown. There's been coming and going, but we need to see if we can make a go at it. And this is another incentive to create expansion, new growth, and just positive input into that particular community, which will spill over, I think, to the other parts of our community. One of the questions I asked David when we had our workshop, and by the way, I have a paper from March that I kept because it really explained TIRS, which is how I came to actually know about it first. So we've been trying so hard to invite you to workshops and public forums, and I know we can't reach everyone, but we have really tried. And one of the questions I asked David at one of the workshops was, if I'm not in this zone, why would I, why would I want to support this? Not that that's that much money going away from our general fund. And his answer was, because the heart of a city is downtown. So we start where it matters most, and perhaps we can take this to other parts of our city. That's, I don't have any questions, those are just some comments.
Sagnar.
I am excited about the plan. I think one of the things that we need to remember is our 2015 plan is looking to the future. Probably half of us in this room won't really see the results of this TIRS, as I understand it. It's going to grow very slowly. Now, that shouldn't be a negative. That should be a positive for our kids and our grandkids, that this is going to, if this had been done years ago, we could be raping the benefits of this now. And so it's something we need to look to the future and use this as a tool for them to be able to benefit from it as their leaders in our community, as they live in our community. And I just think that, I think that's vitally important for us to think about. And it's not going to take away from what we're doing or what we've got, it's just in time is going to add to that. I have a question for David. My question is, have you had any towns withdraw? Have you had any of them say, "We don't want any more to do with this," and pull out?
No, ma'am, not on any TIF that we have created. And that's the simple answer, just now.
Okay, good. I wanted to know about that. Thank you.
If you'll stay up there, I got a question for you. But before you do, I want to say that I intend to enjoy the benefits of this TIRS. And I'm not that young. But for one thing, is I understand it, if we declare this, it helps to attract some investment and interest because people see that we are committed to the area, to the downtown area. But here's my question. Mr. Vogel raised an issue, and another issue was raised in regard to existing businesses. I had somebody tell me, as I look at the TIRS, it's all about attracting new businesses and so forth, but what about the existing businesses? So would you comment on that?
And if I portrayed it that it's about attracting new businesses, it's reinvesting in existing businesses and existing properties in downtown. So if there's a business that's downtown that sees an opportunity to grow, to, if we need sidewalks, if we need infrastructure, or they plan on doubling the size so they can employ more people, we have those tools within the toolkit of the TIRS to be able to help support that. So it's not about replacing anything, it's about making it stronger. And so economists around the country look at, when they look at a city, what's the health of the downtown? And so those businesses that have stuck it out, they're going to reap the benefits of having more commerce around them and more activity and not be in a desolate, not that it's desolate now, but I think that we could certainly see some improvements and a refocus of targeted investment, and that's what this does. And so it is about attracting new investment and encouraging investment in existing properties.
Okay, all right. Mr. Brody.
Okay, let me start off by saying that I think Mr. McDaniel can confirm this. When I first met him and I came on council and he was new to the city manager, I'm one of those people that believes in the idea of a downtown that is thriving. I don't, I don't, I don't want to walk away from it. I've had arguments with different people, it'll never happen, whatever. I believe in that. So that's the starting point. As far as whether this is a good tool with a net benefit or not, I think we're a little bit premature at this particular moment. I'll go into some of it, but the first thing really is, you talked about a Texas two-step. Is there really any reason to create the zone prior to having a, not a preliminary, but an actual project plan, so that the businesses that are in the zone, as well as the people that are outside the zone, could actually make an informed decision on whether this is a good thing or a bad thing? And I understand about the, you know, the timing of, the TIRS board has to get created first or whatnot, but in your experience, and you described ours going to be this way, we're the same body. And so is there any real reason not to produce a plan and adopt and create it all in the same motion so people have a say in what's going on?
Unfortunately, the statute basically dictates that these are the processes and the steps that you go through. And the first step is the creation of the ordinance, the creation ordinance, which is that boundary term, the TIF board, the participation, the, and then a preliminary project and financing plan.
Right.
It's preliminary at this point, and then the TIRS board makes the determination as a recommendation back to the council, and there's a separate ordinance. And so that's, you know, spelled out and scripted in the statute. So you really can't put one in front of the other. But I would say that the preliminary plan is a start, and if there's to be changes to that plan, the appropriate place would be in the TIRS board and in the two readings of the final project and financing plan ordinance.
But actually, the, you have to do them in those orders, but the real project planner, the adopted one, wherever, the non-preliminary, is actually required to be a little more detailed. And can council not, outside of the creation, can we not actually say, direct you to create a preliminary plan that's closer to a real one? And then in ordinances bam bam, doing like that? So that again, so that they can see a more detailed, because it leads into next questions without taking a round robin deal, but it kind of gets you there.
Okay. So I see where you're going with that. It makes a lot of sense. And, you know, we'll do the plan, but the longer that we wait, then we lose yet another year of capture of increment. And there's really no risk because at any time, you all can dissolve it. And it's not going to be accumulating any significant funds, as you heard, for three to five years unless there's some, you know, big project that comes in that we don't know about. So anyway, so I don't think there's any harm in going ahead proceeding as the law allows because you can still say, King's X, you know, this really isn't working out for us if you feel like the plan doesn't work for you, or there's, you know, for whatever reason, you know, you have that liberty.
But, okay, just the one part about the timing. If we have to do this just by the end of the calendar year, right now, if we don't change anything to our timeline, we're going to do a creation in two meetings in September, and then we're going to come adopting a project plan in October, correct? So to get past the timeline issue, we could be doing those simultaneously in October. And still, I'm having trouble with being able to actually vote on something, and I don't know what it is. Because without a project plan, it's going to be a little difficult. So yes, I can change it later, but once it's created, as you've seen from some people, ball's rolling down the hill, it's a lot harder to stop it from rolling down the hill once it's started, and I would prefer to talk about it, you know, ahead of time, and we could do it.
Yeah. Mr. Pettit, response?
Yes. So the key thing this year is the creation ordinance because it establishes January 1 of 2018, so that increment can start to be accrued. And to be just honest with you is that the preliminary plan is, basically, we provide a menu of services or menu of what can happen. Very well, you know, and we hope that's not the case, but we think with the TIRS that we would see that $73 million worth of investment over that, that's what we had projected over that 30-year period. And so what we've given is a menu. What I have found is that when people get too detailed and say, this is how these monies are going to be spent, it's not flexible enough to respond to the market and those that are coming before the TIF board. But the key component is getting the creation ordinance, these first two readings established. The TIRS final project and financing plan, that can marinate a little bit, and it doesn't have to occur this year, that's just the way our schedule is at this point. It could occur next year.
Okay, Ms. Segerman?
I think I'm good. I thank you all for having questions and coming tonight.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, stay up there just a minute. The, it has been said that with the TIRS, the city would have the authority to determine what businesses are allowed in the zone, and if the city does not like a business, they can remove it by eminent domain. And I know we've talked about that before, but that is, that has been said in a lot of places. Your response?
Creation of a TIF controls nothing of land use. And so it is following the comprehensive plan and basically does not control land use. What it is, is a response to the market about what opportunities present itself within that area that we kind of carved out and said, we want special attention to refocus those dollars within that area. At no point is the TIRS about who goes where. It's basically saying, we would like to facilitate new investment and reinvestment in existing properties, and we have a funding mechanism to do so. But planning and zoning is no part of a TIF.
Okay, all right. You'll need to come to the podium, please. Okay. Okay.
I've got more questions, and they have to be asked. So we have, basically, we've got a couple of things that nobody has talked about, it's not eminent domain, but it's part of what we're to be discussing today. One is the percentage of participation, and this isn't a question, this is more of a statement. We're assuming it's going to be 100% by the city. One of the breakdowns that we received shows that the, what'd you call it, organic growth over the 30-year, that's the other thing, well, anyways, over the 30 years, the organic growth is projected to be less than 7 million, but close to it, six and a half, something like that, which represents 40% roughly of the overall capture over the 30 years. It would be my suggestion that we start with a 60% participation, so that the issue of whether or not we are kind of pulling what would normally go out to the general fund, we'd be letting that still go out to the general fund. So that's one thing, it's not a question, like I say. But then, as far as the eminent domain thing, well, no, the other, this thing is, in the creation ordinance, we've got written down, it's important that everybody understands what we actually would be claiming by voting for it. We have many options to create a TIRS, you know, based on the criteria of the zone. And you had explained to us that it's somewhat loose as far as what we can and can't say. But the option that I guess we're choosing is whatever is in the tax code that says, was it 311.0582, which just says, the zone must be, we're going to declare that this zone, the boundary as we've written it, be predominantly open and because of obsolete platting, deterioration of structures, or site improvements, or other factors substantially impair or arrest the sound growth of the municipality or county. Not really a question, more of a statement to the public. Look at the boundary and you tell me if that appears to fit predominantly open. I'm not sure that it does. But having said that, we also are making the statement that if we don't do something, do something like this, the zone as it's, in its current state, will substantially impair or arrest the sound growth. And as you stated, and we all know, there's some, there's some growth coming, pretty imminent. And so I'm a little unsure of the, like I say, this is kind of going towards whether we should be taking 100% or 60%. So then, then you have...
Wait, 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 let's ask Mr. Pettit to respond to that.
Actually, I didn't have a question, so I'm just going to keep going.
You presented all kinds of issues. I'd like for Mr. Pettit to respond.
I've actually provided information, and I haven't asked a single question, so I'm going to go on with my question. I haven't yielded the floor. So the next issue is actually this issue of eminent domain that people are asking about, and we're making statements about that aren't exactly clear or correct, which is basically, we are creating, when we create a TIRS, we are going to create a project plan. And that project plan, implementing that project plan, is defined as a public use, public purpose by the tax code. So by creating a project plan that is a public purpose, you now have, and the city always has this right, always, they do not have to be a part of a TIRS board. So the TIRS board not having the right to do any of this is somewhat irrelevant. The city can use condemnation in order to implement a project plan. Now, the law that talks about economic development is the Government Code 2206, and it says, "A government or private entity may not take private property through the use of eminent domain if the taking is for economic development purposes, unless the economic development is a secondary purpose resulting from municipal community development or municipal urban renewal." Basically, if it's a secondary purpose and you can show that, then you're good to go. If we have a project plan, which implementing it is a public purpose, there's your primary purpose. So yes, you do have, the city has the authority to do this. I'm not saying that they intend to, I'm not saying that it's a good idea or a bad idea. But the businesses that are in the zone need to make the call themselves. I'm not going to make it for them, but they should know that that's the risk that they have to weigh against all the benefits, which are many. But they should know that that's the risk that they have to weigh against all the benefits, which are many. And then, as far as examples of it, it was used in El Paso. And back in their downtown plan in 2005, when our good friend Beto was on council. And it's been used, Texas, Texas did tighten it down. But that's what the law I just read you was, was the tightening down. So it's still available. And as far as being able to know for sure what we're walking into, the other thing that if we could put up on the, the screen, something from the, the pamphlet or packet that we have today, in our, in our packet, it's actually in the, the spreadsheets that we're looking at for the TERS, the residential spreadsheet. If we could put that up on the screen.
Okay, how, how much more do you have?
This is important information. I don't have but a couple of minutes if we get it up on the screen.
Okay, two minutes.
No, I'm going to take what I've got, which is, this is important stuff. I need you to get onto the residential spreadsheet page, which is, I don't know where it is.
Is it on PowerPoint?
Yeah, yeah.
What are we talking about?
Um, the, the residential, the, the one that actually has the, the 30-year guesstimate. It's an input-output one. That's what it is.
I don't think we have that.
Oh, on the screen?
On the screen, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, well, it's in the packet. Bottom line is, I had, I had mentioned this to you before. The, and I assume that, you know, our staff reviews this stuff before it gets in the packet. But the, the residential schedule that's up there for 30 years has gross totals for taxable revenue over to the right. They don't match up with the summary totals or the totals that are at the bottom. And it, looking at the spreadsheets, the cells have been pointed to the wrong place. And the best example I had was on the residential spreadsheet. It shows that, we've got like six taxing entities. It shows KISD with 45,000 and UGRA with 13 million. Okay, so, for those of us here, UGRA is the one that only gets like a portion of 1% of our tax. KISD is our biggest taxing entity. So, those numbers were reversed and it actually double dipped in the total for that particular spreadsheet. It made a little bit hard to figure out whether what we see in what, what's presented is completely, you know, correct. The residential one, the office one, and the hotel one all had similar type information in there. And the, and then the acreage that we're showing for the zone, we're saying it's 477. I'm not really sure how it got to 477. Because when we use a couple of different tools to map that out, it comes out to like 350. Now, I could have been wrong. I'm not suggesting this. But it would be nice to get that verified, really, before moving forward. The other is, we got told this-
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, is, is there a point to the question?
Yes, there's, there's a point to getting the-
And you're going to wrap it up?
Yes, I am.
Okay, please do.
The point is information to the public. And so, I have, basically, on the agenda bill, we were told that the, the capture for the 30, for the base is set at 99 million. Or the capture for the 30-year for the whole thing was set at 17 million now. And we were preliminary told it was 19 million. The reason we were told was because Kirk had discrepancy, or downgrades or whatever you want to call it, adjustments. And so, the reality is that in our preliminary stuff, our base here was put in as assessed value for the base instead of the taxable value. So, we were given a base that was 131 million for the zone instead of 90, instead of 130.
Okay, let's stop. And that's a lot, that's a lot, Mr. Pettit.
I haven't yielded the floor, sir, and I'm about to tie it up with the only thing that mattered. Which is basically, all the information is out there to get to the people so that they can make the decision themselves and understand why. And at the end of it all, I'm basically saying that I would, I would make a motion to direct staff to move forward with producing a final project plan and financing plan for the proposed zone. When those two plans are complete, then and only, then return to council for creation ordinance to include adoption of project and financing plans. So that we can get these preliminary numbers cleared up so that we can make a decision based on reality.
All right, I'm, I'm sure between staff and Mr. Pettit, those issues will be addressed. Do you have anything to say to us tonight?
No, sir, I mean, first, I was made aware of any discrepancies in the, the spreadsheets and walked through them with the citizen, John Harrison, previously. Be happy to work with you through any issues that might pertain to that. But once again, they are preliminary and the final works out. And to talk about the appraisal district, those were the initial numbers. Those numbers change when the appraisal district, all the time, when they make adjustments and replat parcels. And so as we kind of look at boundaries. And with regards to the overall square footage and the acreage, that's done through a GIS file. So it's a shape file. And so, that, that's been vetted by not only our office, but also by Kerr County. So, those would be my answers to those questions.
Okay, Mr. Rudy, would you forward that information from tonight to Mr. Pettit and to the city manager?
Well, as it stands right now, I've made a motion. And I don't have a problem with Mr. Pettit. I think it's in our-
What was the motion?
I, I read it off, but I'll read it again.
Yeah, no, that's, was there a second?
No, I, I'm not sure.
I didn't, I didn't, I-
I, I will-
I didn't hear-
About the legality of what we're talking about.
Mike, you-
You know, there was a lot said, and I, I was, I appreciate the opportunity, but I, let's just, I think you ought to deal with the motion on the floor.
Yeah, okay, there, there is not a second? So, I, I would move that we, that we adopt-
Because Mr. Sigerman didn't hear it, I'll go ahead and read it again so the record sees it. Make motion to direct staff to move forward with producing a final project plan and financing plan for the proposed zone. When those two plans are complete, then and only then, return to council for creation ordinance to include adoption of project and financing plans with the added part to verify that the preliminary plan has numbers that actually are verifiable.
Okay, is there a second?
No.
No, it dies for lack of a second. And I move 6D, ordinance number 201819, designating a continuous geographic area within the city as a reinvestment zone pursuant to Chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code to be known as Reinvestment Zone Number 1. City of Kerrville, describing the boundaries of the zone, creating a board of directors for the zone, establishing a tax increment fund for the zone, containing findings related to the creation of the zone, providing a date for the termination of the zone, providing that the zone take effect immediately upon passage of the ordinance, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all right, all in, do we have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of that motion, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand? Okay, that passes.
All oppose?
Yeah, okay. Now, we are going to change the next order. And that is, we're going to deal with the annual budget first, 7B, and then go to 7A, the ad valorem tax.
7B is ordinance number 2018-17, adopting the annual budget for the city of Kerrville, Texas, fiscal year 2019, providing appropriations for each city department and fund containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause.
All right. Do we have a staff member who is going to speak to that?
Mayor, we've made all of our presentations at multiple occasions. And really, we're just here to respond to any final questions. We've had the two workshops, we've had multiple occasions, both privately, together to vet some questions. And so this is really just the final consideration of the budget for next fiscal year.
Okay, um, all right. Discussion, anyone to speak to this or move to discussion by?
I move that I'll make a motion to approve this ordinance, 2018-17, with a record vote on second reading using the following motion. I move to approve ordinance number 2018-17 to adopt the city's budget for fiscal year 2019 on second reading.
I second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Any discussion?
I have a comment, Mayor, I'd like to make.
Okay.
Um, I've kind of brought up the issue, or my issue to me of raising the water and sewer tax, sorry, water and sewer rates. I think we're actually going after the wrong rates. I think the effluent rates, reuse waters, the rates we should go after. The actual, I believe, the next three years, our rate increase will total around $660,000. And that is a debt service that we remain with the reuse pond. I know we probably can't do it this year so far along, but I'd like to see us move in that direction, whether it's getting more customers, looking at the raise, something to help prevent raising the water and sewer raise.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I got a couple, a couple of points. Basically, I, I assume it came from Mr. McDaniel, but the packet shows that, you know, I asked questions last meeting and got answers to them. And I'd just like to talk about two of them. One is, as Mr. Vogel discussed, the reuse water rates. I, I had asked a question about whether reuse water rates were conservation rates similar to potable. And was told we don't really have, you know, any one other than the pump and contract rates. And we actually do, it's the truck rates, the, they come in. So, they actually are paying more, considerably more than the ones that are getting it delivered. It seemed contradictory to me. That's what that question was about. The other one was the, the staffing, you know, there were a couple of different staffing questions. But the, the one that actually, the answer that kind of did lead to a question was, we've been talking about adding two sports complex positions, new positions, and one Shriners Park new position. And the answer made reference to moving a pool maintenance person to the sports complex. Are we eliminating a pool maintenance position? Or is that, we're going to backfill the pool maintenance and that body is going to be the one that is moving over?
No, sir, that was just simply a position that was a carryover from the summertime. We had a pool maintenance employee that we just continued over to utilize that service.
So it means that we're, we're not really adding two new sal, or salaries, is that correct? Or we're moving somebody?
That's a temporary position. It's not a full-time position. It's, is kept year-round.
Okay, so, to answer the question then, the pool guy wasn't a full-time before. And so it's not really moving somebody. It's, it's new, it's a new guy. And he's been doing it already, kind of, is what it was said, I guess.
Utilization of his hours beyond the pool time was utilized for the end of the summer period.
Okay, and then, the, the personnel funding out of contingency question I asked was basically about the 3% that we budget for. And I asked about the funding for staffing out of a contingency fund. It was actually the merit raises out of a contingency fund and the appropriateness or whatever of that. And I, I basically was told that, the answer was that, you know, you can do that legally. And that really wasn't my question. I understand that you can maneuver things across budget line items all day long. The point was really, if we have a staffing surplus, which we did in FY '18, and we use contingency money to pay for staffing, whether it's merit raises or whatever, then we're somewhat artificially holding on to staffing budget when it would have, it would have been nice to see that just paid out of the staffing surplus that's there. So it's just, and it changes the 3%.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I would call for the question.
I'm in the middle of my stuff, so I haven't yielded the floor. When I'm done with that, you can call your question.
But, but Mr. Rudy-
That's basically the way it goes. You call the question when there's a yield of the floor, which I haven't done.
These things should have, could have been vetted before this meeting.
They has not been vetted. I'm not asking a question. I'm clarifying for the public. The reason I asked the questions last meeting was so they could get the answers. We got some answers in the packet that aren't exactly up to the answer. So I'm just itemizing the two. And when I yield the floor, we can call the question. No, it will not.
Okay, good.
And just settle down. Basically, that's all there was. I was going to make the statement that I believe the budget has some flaws. The sustainability of the budget, what using, where we're increasing our expense budget by so much on recurring maintenance expenses and not actually increasing our revenues in property tax is a sustainability problem. So, the sustainability and the water rates are the two most concerning ones. But overall, I will support this, this budget, but I, I won't take ownership of it.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of this adoption of the ordinance number?
I have to do a record.
Oh, that's right, yes, thank you. This is the, we're going to do a roll call. But this is ordinance number 2018, adopting the annual budget for the city of Kerrville. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand?
I have to do a roll call.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Rudy?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Eichner?
Yes.
Councilmember Sigerman?
Yes.
Passes 5 to 0.
All right, it is a 5-0 vote. Now, let's go to the ad valorem tax issue, 7A. And second reading, ordinance number 201818. You're going to read it?
Yes, sir. Item 7A is ordinance number 2018-18, levying an ad valorem tax for the use and support of the municipal government for the city of Kerrville, Texas, for the fiscal year 2019, apportioning a levy for specific purposes and providing, when taxes shall become due and when same shall become delinquent, if not paid.
Okay, the council has spent several months dealing with this and the staff began working on this back in February. Any comments or questions by the council?
I move that we accept, that we pass, that we accept the ordinance number 2018-18 for ad valorem tax for the use and support of the municipal government for the city of Kerrville for the fiscal year 2019.
Okay, I think there is a particular wording that is required.
Is there something else?
If you want, it's mine.
Right.
Okay, all right. I move that we approve ordinance number 2018-18 on the second reading using, with this following motion, I move, I'm sorry. I move that ordinance 2018-18 be approved, be adopted, setting the property tax rate at 0.5514 per $100 of assessed value, which is lower than the effective rate of 0.5532 and raises less revenue from property taxes than last year's budget.
It is 5538, so we'll note that correction.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, 5538.
Okay, all right. Okay, all in favor of that motion?
I need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Sigerman? Okay, all in favor of that motion, if you'd let it be known by the raised, raised hand?
I don't need a roll call for this one.
Yeah, okay, raised hand. And it is unanimous, all right? Okay, let's talk about amending the city of Kerrville fee schedule.
Item 8A is resolution number 37-2018, amending the city of Kerrville fee schedule by revising fees charged for various services and uses provided or offered by the city.
All right. Discussion in regard to that? All right?
Yeah, I guess I do. I would, I would suggest that we should consider changing the, the reuse truckload rates to be, instead of this stepped way, create a per-thousand-gallon thing and just call it a day. As far as that, instead of the way we're, we're doing it now, it's $10 for a truckload if it's 0 to 3,000 gallons. And 1750, I think, for a truckload of 3,000 to 8,000. It just seems like it'd make more sense just to say some rate per thousand. And then the other one is, we've got in there Kerrville Little League, the kid-
And then the other one is, we've got in there Kerrville Little League, Kerrville Sports Complex, we've got Kerrville Little League fee for the 2018 season and it's set at zero. Two problems, one, it's not going to be the 2018 season that's going to be in there. And the other is, it's, it's a contracted fee. And all the other contracted fees that we have, such as the reuse water, OHL, using sports complex, Hill Country Use Soccer using sports complex, we, we don't put those in the fee schedule because they're, we just say unless in the contract. So I would suggest removing it from the fee schedule altogether for the Little League.
I have to refer to the city attorney about why we have it in there. I mean, or is Ashley here? I mean, it's always been in there and I guess it's just residual.
Well, it got put in last year, so always is, you know, kind of new, right?
If I remember correctly, it was put in last year just for transparency, so people would know about that thing.
Right, and so the question to why that one's singled out when, say, OHL2 does a contract for use for a season, we don't put that in, or the reuse water. So that's, that's my suggestion, would we, we would pull that out and say, field use for sports complex is whatever it is. And, or say it's, it DBATS unless there's a contract set up, just the way we do it with the reuse fees and the, the water reuse fees. Doesn't have any negative effect on anything?
You're agreeing on that?
I wish we had, I mean, I'd like to take a closer look and talk to my own staff about what all that means. I just haven't had a chance to do that.
Okay, then, then I would say if we pass it, then the staff will look at that? Now, is it warranted to look at the truck fees coming out of the reuse bond?
How much do we sell that to trucks?
It's not a big number at all.
So it wouldn't affect us if we did drop it down to the actual?
Well, I'm not even suggesting you got to drop it down. It just seems to make sense, instead of having two steps, just create one that's a truck fee, a per-thousand-truck fee, whether they've got a 3,000-gallon vessel or an 8,000 one, seems kind of irrelevant.
Well, again, I haven't had a chance to talk to my staff about what that really means in terms of the cost to deliver that. And there may be some nuance that all of us in this room don't know about.
Okay, so the, those two items will be looked at by staff, but we will go ahead and move on, on this resolution number 372018. Okay, do I have a motion?
Before you make the motion, consider, at least on the Little League fee, changing the word so it doesn't say for the 218 season because that's kind of irrelevant.
Okay.
That'll, I'm sure that'll be done. Okay. Do we have a motion in regard to that resolution?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 37-2018.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay. All in favor of that resolution, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand? And it carries unanimously? Okay, approval of the minutes for the regular city council meeting, okay?
Approval of the minutes for the regular city council meeting held on August the 14th, 2018, was tabled at the August 28th, 2018 meeting due to request revisions by Councilmember Rudy. The revisions have been made and were included in the packet.
Okay.
Mayor, I would, I would move that we table it for one more meeting for the simple reason that the corrections that we were provided were actually corrections to the non-original meeting minutes. And I only received them just like you did over the weekend for the packet. And rather than get everybody even more upset by having a discussion about it, I would just suggest that we table this. I make the motion that we table it for one more meeting, at which point I will talk with Cheryl. Or Mark or whoever I got to do.
Go ahead.
I second it.
We have a second, okay? All in favor of tabling that item, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand? Okay. Boards and commissions, we've already dealt with that. City managers report, remember, we don't do questions and discussion to that report.
Okay. I was going to introduce the new planner, chief planner that we've hired, Rebecca Pacini, but she has left at the late hour. And so we'll do that another time. And then I just want to remind the council that we do have a workshop scheduled for the 16th. You're going to take up the second. 18th, excuse me, thank you for that. So we'll take up the second public hearings of the items that you heard tonight, annexation, and then talk about your rules or procedures and ethics policies.
Okay. The workshop is 10 o'clock?
Yes.
Here, right?
Yes.
I'm sure.
Okay. Okay, items for future agendas.
I have one.
Okay.
I would like to, it's a project I've had in my mind for some time that would help and assist people living in homes who don't have either the financial wherewithal or the resources to repair minor things in their home, like front doors or awnings or eaves or minor, you know, repair work that would make a quality of life improvement in them being able to stay in their home. I'm not looking to the city for this effort. I would like to get some input from the city and I have some outside citizens who've given me some input, like contractors and the Christian Ministry Job Corps and various other people who have been very supportive. So it's just, I'd like to put it on the radar and, because it probably will require a decent amount of volunteer work, whatever I can garner from experts complimentary. But I already have a few homes that I think would qualify and some of them may actually qualify as historic preservation work. So it, you could call it our housing plan. Because housing plan covers many things and I think that's part of it. So just to continue to be updated on what I'm doing, like I said, I'm not asking for any money or yet.
So you want that as a gym item or a workshop item or?
Well, I think a workshop item would be great because I'm sure I could gain a lot of input from everyone. So another workshop, there you go.
And I had a conversation with someone today who might have some resources that could help us in that light.
I got, I got one also.
Okay.
Oh, good.
I spoke at the farmer's market last Friday and I think, I can't, I think it might be the end of October, they go from weekly to once a month?
I think you're right.
They're thinking, they've been pretty successful and they're wanting to look at maybe doing it weekly or biweekly. But maybe we can discuss that, get some numbers from them and decide what we want to do.
Okay.
All right. The city council are going to executive session related to consultation with attorney, 551.071 and 551.087, deliberation concerning economic development negotiations.
And if you'll add the 551.072 about real property.
Okay, all right. Add to, add to the 551.072, okay?
So you make that as a motion?
Yeah, I make that as a motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Yeah, yeah, right. 9:56, we are coming back from executive session and we have no items of action. So we are adjourned at 9:56.